Welcome to the January 21st, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Veneeth Hamavati. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zwerko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comments. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now.
Sarah Heenan in 19 News.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, and we will begin now with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The annual town meeting, and these are the Select Board announcements that we'll begin with, the annual town meeting has been set for Tuesday, May 13th, at 7:00 PM in the LHS gym. Citizen petition articles with certification by the town clerk are due in the Select Board's office no later than 4:30 PM on Monday, January 27th. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. The town of Long Meadow has launched a survey to help gauge citizens' sentiment about the town's athletic fields generally and the interest in pursuing a synthetic field for the high school stadium field. We encourage you to participate in the survey by visiting longmeadowma.gov/civillearts. The town is pleased to announce the commencement of work approved by voters at the 2024 Fall Special Town Meeting to create a town-owned fiber network. Over the next several weeks, residents will see field engineers from Precision Valley Communications gathering mapping information and existing utility distribution networks for engineering and design planning. This critical information will inform the town's planning of a town-owned fiber network. To view the full press release, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civillearts. And we will now move into resident comments. Do we have any residents here? Make a resident comment. Tom, come on up. Name, address.
I'm speaking tonight regarding the Select Board meeting of December 16th regarding the process and non-reappointment of Richard Foster as a Board of Assessor BOA member. Mr. Foster is a veteran, a previous capital planning member for three years, Select Board member for nine, BOA member for the past one and a half years, and a resident for 16 years. The BOA is very important, and it sets real estate and personal property valuations, poses the tax rate, and handles abatements. It impacts every residence and commercial property in town. The member needs to know neighborhoods, property conditions, and some municipal finance, which we all know is sometimes difficult. All five Select Board members praised Mr. Foster for his many years of service to the town, getting certified and joining the BOA when the town had a dire need, as well as his work on the BOA. I believe all were sincere, except for one. Mr. Zeller, the former chair of the BOA and 15-year member in a letter of recommendation dated December 4th contained in tonight's Select Board agenda and read at the appointment meeting, was a strong endorsement of Mr. Foster, concluding with, "I think he is a great asset as a board member." Mr. Zeller has subsequently resigned from the BOA due to recent actions of the Select Board, and his letter is contained in tonight's agenda. He was dismayed and took umbrage at the words of certain Select Board members, such it was also an affront to his service. The reason for electing a different candidate and not Mr. Foster were the need for new eyes and a fresh start. I repeat, new eyes and a fresh start. The term "new eyes" is recognized as likely age discriminatory or ageism. In essence, new eyes better than someone with older eyes. Two of the Select Board members that did not endorse Mr. Foster voted for him for the BOA position on September 6th, 2022. What drove the change in support? There are at least six of us here who know the real story. Mr. McLean is likely to do a fine job once he passes the exams. Given the numerous vacancies on other boards, Mr. McLean should have been recruited for another position where there was an opening. In conclusion, remember, words have consequences. What message do these statements and actions give the 40% of Long Meadow voting-age citizens over the age of 60 who have lived here and paid taxes for decades? Tonight, the Select Board and town management need to answer two questions. Is there a quorum of the BOA? Can it conduct normal business and able to process abatements starting February 4th? Are there issues or problems in the BOA, such as with the town's assessments, or tax rate calculations, or abatements, that would need new eyes and a fresh start?
We've got about 10 seconds left.
I believe that certain Select Board members owe an apology to Mr. Foster, Mr. Zeller, and the citizens of Long Meadow, especially the older ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quite welcome.
Any other resident comments? Anyone online? Uh, no. Okay. We'll move forward with interview and appointments. So we've got a board and committee appointment. We have Rebecca Lindsay, who interviewed with us at our last meeting. She interviewed for a position with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee for a vacant three-year term. I move that we appoint Rebecca Lindsay to the vacant three-year term expiring on June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. We will move on next to Select Board comments. I just had one comment that I'd like to make. A couple weeks ago, we were contacted by the Local Policy Lab, which is a nonprofit organization out of California. They provide consulting services to local governments all over the country for different items that local governments need assistance with, and they were working with the city of Missoula, Montana, and a few other cities, and helping these local governments create task forces to address different community needs. And so in their research all over the country and looking at how different local governments had created task forces and operated them, they came across the Municipal Fiber Task Force. And they did research on our work, looked at what we did, and found that we were exemplary in the way that we operated, and what we were able to deliver, and the quality of work that we were able to deliver. So they wanted to meet with us to learn more about the work that we did, and we had an opportunity to share our experience, so it is good to obviously be recognized, but it's also good to know that some of what we learned while we did the work of the Municipal Fiber Task Force cannot be used all over the country to help other towns be able to use a task force to engage citizens, to lean on the expertise of their town residents, and also be able to conduct more work than what just town government itself could do. So that was good to do. Anyone else? Mark?
I have a series of things. Just a, Lynn had it in her monthly report, but I think it's important to note that Lynn and Andrew Chason and I attended the Department of Public Utilities hearing on municipal aggregation. It was probably the shortest public hearing we've ever been at in our life, but I think it was important that people be there representing Long Meadow management, elected officials, and public officials. And I haven't heard the results of it yet, but I suspect it'll be very positive. Also, I've attended a building committee meeting on the 13th of January, and I think we need to continue to work with the building committee and help them better understand their role in assessing both the capital plan for buildings and other activities for buildings. I think it's, they're kind of looking for our guidance to a large extent. Was it the recycling committee meeting on the 10th of January, and then a specific meeting talking about the recycling of, or excuse me, the pickup of recycling materials? That meeting was subsequent to that on the 13th. The, that committee is planning a public outreach on the new trash recycling pickup and hauling systems with carts that are being delivered, and we hope that there'll be something on our website soon, and certainly that'll go out in advance of the July 1st new trash hauling contract. The other thing I just wanted, two things, just to remind people, yesterday, yeah, yesterday, Sunday night, we had the first substantial snow in town, and there's a good number of people who are having trouble, difficulty shoveling sidewalk, clearing fire hydrants that is required to do that. I know that the Adult Center used to have a list of people who were able to, are willing to help. Some seniors in town were having trouble doing their own clearing, and I would encourage people to do that, but you really do need to clear the sidewalks and the fire hydrants. Finally, I want to just comment on two letters of resignation that we got in the town. The first one was a resignation, and I'd like to think of it as retirement, from Eleanor Stoller, who has resigned from the Council on Aging. Eleanor served the town for many, 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 many years. She will, she's the first person who suggested and then recommended and pushed hard for the construction of a new adult center, and her input to the town, as interesting as it often is, will be sorely missed. But I think we need to recognize Eleanor's many, many years of work on behalf of the town, and wanted to do that. The other resignation was mentioned in the public comments. Michael Zeller has resigned from the Board of Assessors. Michael served the board for 15 years and also did an amazing job when, at some points, there were very, very few people on the Board of Assessors to get us through what is a critical, critical function in the town, from people who are looking for either abatements or other discussions about their assessment. So I want to thank both Michael Zeller and Eleanor Stoller for their many, many years of service to the town.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Josh?
I don't like to respond to resident comments, but those accusations are absolutely untrue. There's more to appointments and reappointments than past service, and it's not the whole story, and if anybody wants to, I'm happy to share the whole story fast, but I'm not going to do it in public, and I don't appreciate those accusations.
Dan?
Thanks. Completely agree with Mark on Eleanor Stoller. I've known Eleanor for several years in town, and she's done, she has a lot of energy, she has a lot of opinions, smart woman, and she's dedicated several years to our community, even most recently on the COA board as well. So wanted to make sure I acknowledged Mrs. Stoller as well as Mr. Zeller. I was gonna acknowledge him towards the end of our meeting with the correspondence, but really do appreciate his several years of service to our community, a huge asset to our community, and I'm sad to see him go, but I'm sure we can get some other folks to step up for the role. But again, I really appreciate Mr. Zeller and all of his contributions to our community right here in Long Meadow, so thank you. Also, I just wanted to mention, you probably saw it on Facebook, but the recent Long Meadow Fire Department and the rescue of the dog that was in distress that went through the ice down at the meadows, so just goes to show all the training and the professionalism of our fire department on a regular basis, keeping us safe and our animals safe. I'm just very thankful for that. So thank you for the fire department and their swift efforts on rescuing the dog at the meadows, and then also unfortunate event on South Ave, as well with our police department working with federal agents and the work that they did to apprehend a suspect, taking firearms out of our community, as well as drugs as well. So, you know, many times people think you're in Long Meadow, and these things don't happen, but it's unfortunate, it's an epidemic across our country, and I just truly, I'm thankful that our fire and police continue to do good things for our community, so I just, I wanted to make sure that I spoke up on that, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Andrew?
Just one comment. I enjoyed going to one of the latest CPC meetings. I just wanted everyone to know that there is a public hearing on February 11th for the CPC articles. Those are very, there's a lot of important ones this year, including for a possibility of Glenbrook Fields being redone, and that's an important one that I think that we'd love to get community input on, because there's, you know, there's, the fields need work, but also it's going to be part of a possible larger, you have to take a larger view sometimes because Glenbrook, the middle school, might be changed, obviously, if a new middle school is built at the Williams site. So I think there's, I think it's a very interesting conversation about when those fields are done, and I think it's important to get as much input as possible. So February 11th for the CPC public hearing.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move along to town manager's report.
Thank you. So first on my report tonight is the vacancy in the Westcom Executive Director position. The Westcom's first executive director has resigned, and we are seeking an interim executive director. The job posting is linked on my report. The assistant town manager, I'm going to share some transitional news regarding Corinne Meisi Muns, who as everyone knows is the assistant town manager, planning community development director. Corinne will be leaving the town of Long Meadow to take a position with the State Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Corinne has been doing much of the same, she will be doing much of the same work that she's currently doing for the town, but on a much larger scale in the state. Unfortunately, or fortunately for Corinne, saw the amazing work that she does here in town and has offered her the position, which she's accepted. We wish her nothing but the best, and the steps to fill her position are in the works. A long-range plan update. As all of you know, the town won a Mass Chapter Award from the American Planning Association. This was presented at a statewide event a couple weeks ago, and at that event, one of the other planners from another community saw Long Meadow's plan and has reached out and asked if they could submit it to a national award with the American Planning Association's Small Town and Rural Division, which we agreed to. We're helping to gather support letters for that. It's likely a long shot that we will win a national award, but it is still great recognition, especially from up here in the eastern part of the state. I have some updates here regarding the tree warden. As we know, the tree warden's been working on public education, and she's made significant progress. On January 7th, Leah attended the Mass Tree Warden and Foresters Annual Conference and co-presented a lecture that discusses the changing demographic in the world of arbor culture, including age, gender, sexuality, and race. Leah's goal is to not only give, but also to gain perspective from underrepresented groups in the tree work industry, to bring back ideas on how to promote diversity in Long Meadow's forestry division. And in addition, the tree warden has been accepted to the Urban and Community Forestry Society's Municipal Forestry Institute. This is a week-long program that teaches students soft skills required in municipal forestry work. During the last week in February, she'll be in California, attending an intensive educational program to master leadership and management tools for program and administration, strategic thinking, and public relations. DEI forums recently were held. The first one on January 9th, this was put on by the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. They have scheduled six learner forums at the Adult Center. The first one was embracing our differences. The forums are open to any and all to join. The Reminder had great coverage of this event in last week's publication. I've linked that story in my report. Information on the next forum will be shared in my next monthly town manager newsletter. As was mentioned in Select Board comments, the municipal aggregation process is ongoing. On January 15th, the Department of Public Utilities held a public hearing on the town's municipal aggregation plan. The only public comment received was in support of the plan. Comments were made by Select Board Member Gold, Energy and Sustainability Committee Chair Chason, and I also spoke in support of the plan. This was one of the required steps in moving the town's plan forward, and we're still on target for approval in the spring. A request for qualifications for Town Hall, Old Town Hall, and Community House was released in December. Bids were due on December 20th. Unfortunately, we received no bid responses. Internally, we discussed options, and before we separate the project into two or three separate projects, we're speaking with consultants that we've used on other projects to see if we can entertain interests from any of them to submit a response. If any of those consultants are not available or not interested, then we'll pursue separating the workout. Converse Street L Project easements, as was announced at the last Select Board meeting, easement letters were sent to 72 property owners with compensation values for the easements. Calls and questions have been received by the DPW engineering team. There were also requests to receive copies of the appraisal reports from those individual homeowners. On the advice of Town Council, appraisal reports are confidential or executive session material until after taking orders have been recorded. And a bit of good news regarding a malfunction of the hot water tank at the Adult Center. On Friday, December 27th, the custodian at the Adult Center investigated a smell and found the water tank on fire. His quick identification and response, his quick identification and the quick response from the Long Meadow Fire Department saved us from what could have been a very big issue. Fire was isolated and no damage to the building or injuries happened. The town's plumbing contractor was on-site quickly and determined it to be a common electrical issue with that type of unit. The warranty has been reviewed, and a new unit has been ordered. The repair's been completed, and a big thank you to Hector for his quick work in notifying the fire department. That concludes my report tonight. Happy to take any questions?
I'll just start off by just saying that Corinne is going to be a big loss, and, but I'm excited for her and this new opportunity. The state is going to be very lucky to have her in this role, but she's just done such great work for the town and will be really hard to replace, but excited for her and wish her the best of luck. And I also just wanted to really quickly comment that in the DPW monthly report, I saw that progress is being made on filling three vacancies. I think one had already been filled and two others, offers had been made, so that was good to see that we're seeing movement there, especially after some of the negotiations from last year on DPW wages. Anyone else?
I did notice in the building report, so on Williams Street by Kinder Care where the old synagogue was, that property, so that was the first time that I noticed it, but it appears that there's going to be six, like a housing development there? I don't know if you know more about it, but I'm sure there's a lot of people, especially on Churchill Drive, I think it is right next door, who would be pretty interested to learn more about that. So I assume we're going to go through the process and, you know, Planning Board will have its say as well, but that was just one of the things that stuck out to me, that six new houses, I believe, will be built there.
Yeah, there's been preliminary discussions. Nothing has been filed yet. This is our third iteration of entertaining conversations with prospective developers.
Third you know of, Lynn. It's probably the fifth or sixth.
Yeah, yeah, third in the time I've been here. And so we'll await something to be filed, but there have been preliminary discussions about six single units.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. All right, we will move on then to approval of meeting minutes. So there are draft meeting minutes attached, and I will, I move that we approve the December 16th, 2024, meeting minutes, subject to the revisions that Mark probably sent Mike.
I didn't, because I haven't read them. I just got them at 2:00 this afternoon, so I didn't see them.
Okay.
I haven't read them.
All right.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, that's fine.
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Abstain? All right. Next up is our municipal light plant board discussion. So this is just to kind of close the loop a little bit on some of the discussions that we had in December. So attached, it's a legal opinion that was requested from Town Council about the vote and a copy of the intergovernmental agreement that we entered into with Fiber Spring. I think some of you all probably saw the press release. Last week, we had a kickoff meeting with Fiber Spring where we were able to meet with, connect them with DPW to begin coordination of efforts there so that we could de-conflict projects. It was a great meeting, and I think the town got to see why the task force recommended Fiber Spring in the way that they are thinking ahead of, you know, a couple steps ahead, how thoughtful they are with their work, and so that was a good meeting. And then this week, they started with their field walkouts to start assessing polls and collecting information on polls, and there was a press release that went out about that, and I think, you know, folks have probably seen some of the signs around town and seen some of the engineers around town beginning that work. The design and engineering and the poll applications should take about, well, the walkouts should take a few weeks, maybe four or five weeks, but the complete package of design and engineering, they said should be completed around July, and so at that point, we will have what the town will look like with different fiber hoods, we will have an actual dollar amount for the project, and then, you know, we'll be able to assess what to do after that. We were discussing in December at our last meeting about the municipal light plant board and, you know, some of the options with how we could populate that board. One was through election, and we talked about how if we went through election, the board would be seated in June 2026. If the Select Board were to serve as a municipal light plant board, that could happen in September of this year, so I think at least my sense was that the board was leaning towards the Select Board, serving as a municipal light plant board, but I had a couple of other questions. You know, one of the, one of the things that we talked about was having the task force turn into an advisory type of board for the Select Board, which I think was a good idea. And then there was also questions about a municipal light plant manager. So I did, you know, go out and talk to Fiber Spring about that, and I talked to some of the other municipalities around us to kind of get, pick their brains and get their thoughts on it, and what kind of the consensus that everyone kind of came back to me with was that at this point of the project, or at least for the next couple of years, where we have a Select Board, we have an advisory group, we have Fiber Spring who we're paying to do a lot of this stuff, we don't really need a municipal light plant manager that's full-time that we're paying a stipend or a salary to, that for the time being, we could have a volunteer MLP manager, and this would be someone that basically serves as a liaison between Fiber Spring and the town. Fiber Spring is going to be holding bi-weekly meetings about the project here in Long Meadow, so this person could attend the meetings and, you know, basically report back to the town. Lynn and I kind of discussed this briefly, and there is a member of the task force, Ben Brown, who did the presentation at Town Meeting, who, you know, he runs the whole network for the University of Massachusetts and knows more about this than, you know, most folks, that he would be a good person to have serve in this role, and he's, you know, said that he's been willing to do it, and that's kind of how we can start off with this and see how it's going. But, you know, I think, you know, we can, based on where our conversation was last time, it seems like if we are going to go with the Select Board serving as the municipal light plant board, then we can, you know, see that there's an article placed on the Town Meeting warrant in May to, you know, for that purpose, for the Select Board to serve as the MLP board. But those are kind of the updates from our last meeting on December 16th, but, you know, I don't know, any comments, thoughts? Anything? Mark?
So I still like the concept of an MLP manager, and I know nobody's discussed this at all, but we have a vacancy at the highest levels of our town administration right now, and I don't know what Lynn has in mind, we've never talked about this, of, you know, are we just going to hire somebody, direct replacement for Corinne, or are we going to potentially look at restructuring that position? And that might be an opportunity for us to consider having somebody there who does planning, but maybe has this additional task, and I just want to bring that up because it's an opportunity that doesn't come very frequently, and it, in my opinion, solves a significant number of issues.
Yeah, and with MLP manager, a decision does need to be made now or anything. You know, right now, we can have someone to serve as a liaison- You know, right now we can have someone to serve as a liaison, um, and then, you know, after the MLP board is formed, we can talk more about the manager, but, um, but that was just part of the conversation we were having, so I just wanted to provide updates on what I'd heard back from folks. Dan?
To Mark's point though, I think, um, obviously we're going to be posting the, the job, uh, rather soon, right? So I mean, I think that's, it's a really good point, Mark, to, that we should probably have something, um, you know, in the job description around fiber to see if we can attract a candidate that has a background.
To a large extent, it's up to Lynn, but I, I just want to, you know, I, I don't know if you were going to restructure, if she's going to structure that job or just the direct, but you're right, Dan. I mean, that, that was my point for bringing up.
And the other opportunity that's out there is for IT director, right?
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially. Jeff?
It does seem, I guess maybe my knowledge and experience is limited to East Long Meadow, but the IT director and the MLP manager aligns a lot. I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me. Um, I, I think it'd be hard to find a planner and a grant writer and, uh, MLP manager, although I guess it depends what the MLP manager will do in the, at the end of the day. Um, but, uh, I think that if, if it could work, it's a good idea. Absolutely.
Everything you said as far as like moving forward and having select board serve as the MLP is, it all makes sense to me. Thank you for summing it up and all the work you put into it beneath. It's, it's, uh, it sounds, sounds like it's the right thing to do and we can always get another manager or put like as things develop, but this lia, thank you to Mr. Brown for being willing to step up on our behalf as well, so thank you.
Yeah, Mark?
I guess my question is, and I know Ben Brown from speaking to him 30 seconds here, but I mean, is, is the, is that liaison a kind of position we ought to open up to see who else in town may be qualified, more qualified, less qualified, more interested, have more time, have whatever it is. I, you know, to, to just say we've got somebody on board, I think is, is fine, but you know, there ought to be an open process, I would think.
I, I mean, I'm open to talking about it. This, this, you know, I, I think obviously Ben has been with the task force since the beginning. He's very, very familiar with the project, knows what's going on with it. And this is really just a position to just attend meetings every two weeks and just report back, uh, to the town.
I think it makes sense if the task force is going to be the advisory committee, that the liaison is somebody on that committee, frankly. So I think it, I'm comfortable with it. I think it makes sense.
Yeah, Jeff?
I, I'm comfortable with it, but I am, as someone who attends meetings every two weeks, it's, it is a big time commitment, uh, to Mark's point. And, uh, he's, if he's already running the network for UMass, it might be a big haul. But if he's willing to do it, I think that, that there is a good thinking with the continuity and Fiber Spring already has a, a good relationship with him, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and, uh, it just seems like something that, you know, maybe we do not need to overcomplicate here, you know? And, and delay anything. But what about, is, does everybody feel comfortable with the select board, moving forward, the select board to serve as the municipal light plant board? And kind of starting with that process with the article at town meeting?
I think the timing is, there is no other choice.
Yeah.
We kind of concluded that, didn't we?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, great. So we'll make sure that that gets on, town warrant? All right. Anything else on this? All right, great. Thank you all. Um, next up is our DPW, um, site 21E eminent domain case settlement. So there was a press release that came out, um, in November about the settlement. That, uh, attached the agenda is the settlement agreement as well as receipt of the confirmation of the funds. Lynn, was there anything else that you wanted to add about this?
Um, I'd need some guidance, uh, from the board on where you would like to direct those funds. Right now they're just sitting in a special account, but accounting will need some direction. Otherwise they just flow to the general fund, uh, which is fine. We could leave it that way. I think I had expressed, um, um, a suggestion that we direct those funds to the demolition of the old facility. We're, we're short of money to accomplish that, uh, and this will help get us closer to that amount that we need.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I have no particular objection to directing the funds, but, uh, but based on our past history of getting special revenue, particularly the MGM, you know, I thought, I, I want to make sure that the State Department of Revenue doesn't already have a comment for us of where those funds should go. And I think in the past their comment has always been, it's general revenue. And, and, you know, as opposed to creating a, a separate account, I wouldn't want to do something, uh, counter to what the Department of Revenue would direct us to do. And I know past CEO or CFO, Paul Festerzak and I had many disagreements about it and he kept saying, "Yeah, but the Department of Revenue says here's where the money goes." And that's where the money ended up. So I think we need to see if a, a legal settlement can be earmarked per se, or if it just has to go into the general fund and then be voted out of that general fund for its intended use. Personally, I don't have any opposition to using it. I just don't want to do something that we're going to not be able to.
I'm happy to double check.
Yeah, just checking. If so, um, I'm good with using it for demolition. I think that's part of the project.
Can you remind us how short we were on the demolition? Six?
Yes. We also were very hopeful that by the time we were able to put it out to bid, we'd have a favorable bid result. So if you remember, um, it's going through a really lengthy permitting process. The state put an additional requirement, uh, on, um, our permitting process that it's almost complete, it's almost through. We should have a, um, an order of conditions, I believe, by the end of the month. And that's just one more step getting us closer to actually being able to put it out to bid for demo. So the timing and the bidding is, we're hopeful we'll get a better bid result and be really close.
I'm not necessarily opposed to using it for that, but just, just a question about our legal fees and like how, where are, uh, where that stands in the budget? I know that every year we're often kind of increasing it. Where do we stand right now? If we wanted to kind of at least connect some of these funds to the reason why we, you know, the whole issue with the, uh, with the lawsuit?
Sure.
So where, where do we stand with that?
Yeah, I don't have the exact total right now, uh, but with that last infusion of money at the fall town meeting, um, if you remember, they had estimated, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand to get us through trial. I put in two twenty-five. It's great that we did do a higher number because their bills are coming in a lot higher than they had estimated to us. So we should have enough to cover it, but, um, if we have anything else come up, it will dip into our standard legal budget and then we might have some shortcuts.
Yeah, I would just hate to, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed for the DPW demolition, but also I'd, it would feel a little bit disingenuous to
Yep.
have asked a town for a hundred thousand more legal fees when we had this essentially at one point, but.
Yeah. We have some time. I can, um, look into some of this for you and bring it back in February and then we can have some further discussion.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the timing of this. Um, yeah, I mean, I, putting it towards demolition makes sense, but I think I would, I would want to maybe think through some more options about, you know, what else we, you know, what else could use this money, what else we put it towards, uh, because it is a good, significant amount of money.
Demolition's got to happen though.
Yeah, but so, sorry, I think I missed that. Uh, you asked how much, how short we were, is it six hundred thousand? We're short?
Roughly, excuse me, roughly, um, there was, there's seven hundred thousand earmarked in the building project itself that was supposed to cover demolition. The, um, estimates we received were about 1.2 million. So we're going to be short. But that included, um, the full site cleanup as well, not just taking down the structures, taking down the fencing. It was, you know, making the site look much nicer than just removing the building.
Okay.
And just, and, and so after the demolition, um, are there going to be a, like I, I went to a forum probably two months ago at the adult center, uh, around the demolition. Will there be additional, you know, public forums about what we're going to use with this space and, and?
Yeah, so the, the demolition plan is just that, the demolition plan. There is no plan at this time for reuse of that parcel. If and when there's conversation, there will include a, a public component of that.
Mark?
Yeah, I guess to piggyback on Dan's comments, often a developer who would come in might be compelled or convinced that it's in their best interest to do the last X percentage of, of the, of the site, what I'll call cleanup or, you know, finalizations in order to make it prepared for, for development. And so it may make sense to not bring it down to a, what I would call like a greenfield type site, you know, level and leave it somewhere if we have not yet decided what, what the town's going to do with it. Because I think if, if you had a developer and let's say we want to turn it into a, a solar field, for example, they might have particular requirements for prep, preparation that would, they'd be doing it anyway, so why are we going to do it and then have them come back and do it again? It, and I, and I have no clue what we're going to use it for. I'm just trying to save the town some money by not bringing it down to where we, you know, could plant grass seed on it, just to have somebody come up and say the first thing we're going to do is tear up the grass seed kind of thing.
Yeah, um, I know this isn't the, the topic on the agenda, so we could talk about it at a separate, at, um, a separate agenda topic. But the, um, any plans for reuse there are, are years away. We, we have not even started that discussion. Um, we do have a site that needs to be dealt with and there is a partial site, um, assignment by DEP there. So we have some state regulations that we have to take into account. Uh, and then there's partial garage space that is going to be maintained where we store grounds equipment, so that would also need to be accounted for. I would say we are at least three years off from even looking at, um, what a reuse there could be. We just have too many other projects going and, um, we just don't have capacity to talk about a reuse of that site in, in any sort of, um, firm plans.
All right, anything else? All right, so we'll come back next meeting and continue the discussion? Okay, great, thank you. Next up on our agenda is the discussion on retirement contribution options. So the Hampden County Regional Retirement Board and, you know, are, are part of it, uh, has been topic of discussion for a long, long time. The costs, uh, you know, are increasing and we've, you know, this has been something that we've been trying to solve. So at our last meeting, at, last time we talked about this, you know, I'd asked, um, that, you know, we try to look into some solutions and try to see, you know, what, uh, what could be done to possibly extricate ourselves or, you know, find a different way to, to handle this. So, um, Lynn and Ian have been looking into this and now they've prepared a memo and, um, Lynn, do you want to?
Sure.
Further about this? Thank you.
Yeah, um, and so at a last, I don't think it was our last meeting, but it was a recent select board meeting, um, there was desire to continue this conversation. And so I did reach back out to town council and they spent considerable time reviewing this. As you see in the memo here, um, there is no mechanism in Mass General Law Chapter 32 that enables us to leave this regional retirement system. This was the same information we had previously. We would need a special act to, in order, um, to allow us to remove that has not been, there is no example of this being done from a community that's in a regional, uh, retirement system. There are examples of it when a community is a single system that joins a regional, but not the other way around. So, um, there is some hesitation that, um, this would actually happen, uh, that the legislature would vote for this. It's not impossible. We could pursue it if we wanted to. There is another, there was a follow-up question to that and, and that's whether the town could pick a date, say July 1st, 2025, all new hires at that point when, and in the future would go into a different system as opposed to the current system we're in. Uh, and town council did reply that that is not possible. We would be prohibited from picking a date in the future and having all new hires enter a different system. We would still need to use that other mechanism, a special act to remove ourselves from the regional and go into, um, another retirement system. The last piece of this is if we are successful in removing ourselves, we then need to decide, are we going to do this ourselves? Are we joining another system? And what would the cost be related to that? I did not put that here in the memo, but Ian did do considerable research on, um, what that looks like, just to know whether there are better financial options out there. Another regional that would potentially be a possibility for us is the Hampshire County Regional Retirement System. It does seem to be performing similarly, although better, um, but not, not a number that really swayed Ian and I to come out with a strong opinion. And there will be also considerable costs to extracting ourselves and we don't know exactly what those would be. So I think there's still a lot of uncertainty and it's, it's not clear enough to me to, that we would save enough money in the short term, um, that this would be worth it. But, um, if the board did want to pursue special legislation, now would be the time. We could prepare something with town council's guidance and put it on the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, thank you, um, you and Ian for all of your work on this. Is there, um, is there any reason why we couldn't look at other regional retirement systems beyond Hampshire?
Uh, no, we could. Uh, it was just for the sake of time, um, we didn't do a deep dive into all the regionals in the state. Um, we just chose the next closest one and had conversations there. Um, Ian is available virtually if you had specific questions on, um, his conversations with the Hampshire County system.
Okay. Uh, could, could we find out which ones performing the best?
Yeah, it's a public record. I've got that, yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, then that, and then compare.
They're all in eastern part of the state.
Where?
Yeah, and so, um, some of the interesting things, if you would, thanks. Um, some of the interesting things is Hampshire County invests with PRIM as well. So it's, it's the same investment. Um, it really comes down to administrative overhead and also the pool that is part of the regional district. So, um, you know, Ian and I looked at the numbers, uh, and Ian, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, but, um, he shared some really interesting things. On paper, Hampshire County and Hampden County look very similar, but the number of, um, actual members is greatly, uh, different in Hampden. We have a much higher number in Hampden County than Hampshire County, which contributes to overall administration of the, the program. Ian, is there anything you want to add to that, what I was just saying about the numbers of both?
Uh, sure. Uh, it might be helpful if, uh, Mike, if you could pull up the Google sheet that I shared, I can at least expand on the specific data that I'm looking at. I think the biggest two things I'll start discussing while Mike pulls that up is, one of the questions that were, that was asked was about costs, specifically administrative costs. Lynn and I both looked at Hampshire County versus Hampden County in terms of administrative costs. And what I did is I looked from 2014 to 2022, which is the period of financial statements that were available. Uh, they haven't released their 23 and 24 financial statements yet and neither has Hampden County, so I didn't have that information readily available. So if we look at, uh, Hampden County versus Hampshire County on that time period, uh, it's very similar in terms of, uh, a dollar change in the administrative expenses. It fluctuates from year to year with, um, some of the years being thirteen thousand dollar difference, with some years being eighty thousand dollar difference. Now, if we look at the difference in administrative costs between plants, it's about 50/50. Some years are worse where Hampshire has better costs, some years are better. So to me, if it's a 50/50 split in that timeframe, it's not distinguishable enough to say one is better versus the other. Now, I also looked at return data because we want to know that we're getting the best value for our money. Uh, we actually performed better in the Hampden County system compared to the Hampshire County system.
Ian, if I could interrupt you one second, the spreadsheet you shared with me.
There we go. Thank you.
Could you just tell us where you are on this chart?
Yep, so if you want to scroll down, I'm on the first tab, the appropriation comparison data. So, what I did is, I took the data from FY15 to FY23, and there is more data in here, they have estimates going forward, but specifically, the data range that both Hampden and Hampshire County had available is 2022 to 2014. If you scroll down to row 43, Mike, this is where you can see the annual money-weighted rate of return of investment expense. So, comparatively, you might see, in 2022, we had a pretty poor year where Hampden County had an 11% loss, comparatively Hampshire County had a 10.78% loss. And going back, you can see, it's, you know, a percent to a half a percent difference on a year-to-year basis, and that adds up over time. But I think the biggest takeaway is, if you scroll over to the right, if you go to column M, you see that we have actually performed better, we, the Hampden County Retirement Board, has performed better as a percent for the past nine years. So, I think that that to me is, that is distinguishable when we're talking about where our money's going, what our money's being, how our money's being invested, and how well we're doing. Now, I think Lynn brought up a point about, we both invest with PRIM, and I think that that is why our investment returns are so similar. But, to Lynn's point, Hampden County has more members, so you're going to see a bit of a variance in investment returns with more contributions. Hampshire County has a lot of smaller members, so their contributions are smaller, and that's going to affect the overall investments. I think that, from this data, if you want to go to the next tab, Mike, that changes in NPL, this really told the story for Lynn and I in terms of comparing Hampshire to Hampden. So, the biggest thing that you're going to see is different, is the net pension liability, that is our overall obligation that we owe from all of the benefits that need to be paid out to current and future employees, or future beneficiaries. From Hampden County, as of 2020, 2022, we had a net pension liability of $439 million, with a percent funded of about 52%. As you can see in the time period, we started in 2014 at 51% funded, and in 2022, the period later, we're at 52% funded. It has gone up and down over that time period, but we still remain on the lower end of the funding metric. Now, if you look at Hampshire County, it's a much different story. In terms of net pension liability, we started at $186 million, and in 2022, we're at $200 million, with a vastly different percent funded. I think to me, if you're talking about a $239 million difference in that pension liability, you can see where the larger communities of Hampden County make up a vastly different base than Hampshire County does. Hampshire County includes towns like Goshen, it includes towns like Worthington, and South Hadley, East Hampton's Veterans District, Plainville, Huntington, these are small communities that if they got a 10% increase in their retirement assessment, it would be detrimental to them as a whole. So, this is where I think we're going to see differences amongst the two different plans.
Great, thank you, Ian. Any questions, comments, Mark?
You know, I've been kind of somebody pushing this, I don't know if the person pushing this, and I'm, I guess I'm prepared to yell uncle and say that it's not so easy to switch. I'm extraordinarily disappointed, though, that we're in a pension plan that is mismanaged and poorly performing, and can't do anything about it, and the state basically said, you're stuck. And, and I think that if the state people understood the situation, you know, we might have a different answer. Ian, I appreciate your analysis, but for me, the two factors are, what is the ratio of your, of your pension fund costs to, relative to the overall revenue? In other words, if they're all invested in PRIM, and PRIM is earning 10%, what's the, what's the pension fund returning to the town? And I think the numbers are that Hampden County is doing poorly relative to Hampshire County. The second thing is, what's the increase in the annual assessments? And for us, and me at least, that's the critical factor. We are being asked to increase our fund, our funding of our pension plan, 8% additionally every year, with no end in sight, based on Hampden County's comments. Hampshire County has a much higher percent funding overall, and their, their assessments of the towns, and I understand exactly what you said, Ian, but their assessments of the towns are not going up at 8% per year, they're going up much lower than that. And so, from a town of Longmeadow, whose needs to, you know, I mean, we're putting, what, a million, million two or something at the, our pension plan every year? You know, that 8% is big, big money, and if it was only 7%, that's a significant difference. And if it's 6% or 6.5% that Hampshire County appears to be doing, that's even bigger money. So, the issue for me is, you know, when Hampshire County says that they're 58% or 60% funded, and Hampden County, last report was 45% funded, just for reference, the only one less than Hampshire County, Hampden County, City of Springfield's 28.9% funded. But, be that as it may, if, you know, with that low level of funding, the town of Longmeadow is going to be facing maximum allowable by law increases for the foreseeable future. And again, I, Lynn, I appreciate you and Lynn and our attorneys looking at this and saying, you're stuck. And if we're stuck at an 8% per year increase, which it looks like we are, we'd better do something very different, because that doesn't look like it's going to change for the next 10 years. Not where Hampden County Retirement Board is, with relative to their funding, their need to be at, be at a funded level in 2035, and they're now at below 50% funding. So, the issue for me is, if the state tells us, you're stuck, and we're stuck in a terrible system, then I think we have an argument to go back to the state and say, help, we need to get, either need to get out of the system, or we need to reform the system. And we've, we've asked them to reform the system, and politically, it just hasn't worked. I mean, Lynn's worked on it, and me, and special legislation to reform the Hampden County Retirement Board, who continues to have of an excessive, in my opinion, an excessive level of internal fees and costs. And that's, and that's the difference between the Hampden County Board, which I think is problematic, and some of these other boards which have issues, but at least, when PRIM's making a good deal, they're not spending 95% of it on trips to Cape Cod, which is our, what our board was doing. So, that's, that's my statement.
Yeah?
The only, Mark, I completely agree with everything you're saying, and I appreciate you bringing this to the forefront, and Lynn and all your effort, and Ian as well, completely agree. The only thing that we're not talking about is the cost of change as well. So, I mean, that, I don't know, Ian, if you have numbers, we're probably not going to get into all the numbers, but there is a cost and a price involved with, with change. So, we can look at, you know, System A versus System B, but at the end of the day, there's a, there's a massive undertaking with the town employees financially as well. So, I agree with you, Mark, I think this is something that we need to look at, at the state level, and whether or not they want to listen to us. I mean, we're not, we're not going to solve it here, clearly, but I just think there's a lot more to the numbers than, than just looking at the different systems.
I appreciate that, and for, just for the record, I think it would be a fool's errand for the town to try to administer its own retirement plan. I mean, Lynn, you said that as much, and, but that's just a mess to try to do that, everything from just the smallest kinds of things, like keeping up with people who retired 30 years ago's death, so you no longer are paying somebody. I mean, that, that's a full-time job, for example. But, but the point is that, that, that looking at an 8% increase of such a significant cost is something that we'd be remiss if we didn't do our utmost to try to do. Otherwise, there's going to be a lot of other changes to the budget in this town, because we're paying so much money for what I consider to be a poorly managed retirement board.
Yeah, Josh?
Given that we are stuck, which I think is the right term, unless we talk to, without stated action, legislative faction, which we know how much Western Mass gets ignored, have we had any discussions with Senator Olivera or Representative Ash about if there's any snowball chance to hell of succeeding with any of these actions?
We've refiled legislation this year, so...
For Hampden County?
For the Hampden County Retirement, looking for a reorganization, requesting a reorganization of the Hampden County Retirement Board.
But not to remove ourselves?
No, not to remove ourselves, no.
Yeah, so, but it's...
That's a tough one, is that, is it a committee, or?
Yeah, it hasn't even gotten to, well, it's a new, new session, but in the past, it went to a committee and never came out of committee in the past sessions.
Okay, so, let's say that we are able to remove ourselves from the Hampden County Retirement System. What does it look like to join a different system? Does it, I mean, do we, can we just choose, is there some, right, like, so what does that look like?
They would need to accept us. So, there's a couple, couple things. One, we do not know what it will cost to leave Hampden County, to extract our pension liability out of there and have someone else take us on. We don't know what that cost is. We don't know who would take us on. If no one would, then we would start our own. I don't think it's impossible, I think it's an uphill battle, but it's not impossible. To some extent, the legislation that we're talking about here could be symbolic. You, we've, Mark and I have exhaustedly tried to make change to the current structure of Hampden County Retirement. We've also tried to work within the structure that exists by having Longmeadow people or other communities besides just the host community sit on the board, and try to get more voices, new voices in there, and we've, we've had no success there. So, I mean, really, the next step would be special legislation to remove ourselves from it. It would, it would be a strong show of, we're not, you know, we're not going to turn away from a challenge, we agree, we don't agree that this is right, we think something should change, and if you don't agree with us, then we're going to try to do it ourselves. I mean, that's really what we would be saying. But, we would need to be prepared, if it did pass, that we would be coming up with a solution on our own.
Would the Act say that we are removing ourselves and going and trying to get picked up somewhere else, or what is, could it just be, we are removing ourselves and we'll figure it out?
I don't know yet. We haven't gone the next step with the attorney of actually drafting anything. I didn't want them to spend time on that until I had direction from you on, do we, do we want to do that? Do we want to put forward something on the warrant to rescind our prior vote from, like, I think it was the 20s or 30s when it was formed, and, and do something different?
And I think we were talking about this, that in the research that you and Ian had done, you know, obviously, had not found an example of another community being able to remove themselves from a retirement system. So, you know, this could be a good thing or a bad thing. The bad thing is obviously that there's no playbook to follow here. The good thing is, is we could be the first one to, you know, to kind of do this, take advantage of this, before maybe other people get the same idea and you see more of it. For me, I really think it's, if we are able to kind of play out some of this, or get a sense of some of these, the stuff about whether we could join another retirement system, how much that would cost, and if it, all of that looks like it would be very advantageous for us, I think it's worth a shot for us to file legislation, even if it is just symbolic, ends up being symbolic. I think we need to try something, because right now, this is not workable, like, it's not sustainable. So, I would rather take action than, you know, kind of just sit here and continue to have the same conversation every year about it. Mark?
Just a potential, I won't say argument, but a potential pathway is, you've got this, this proposed legislation, it's on the, it's there, it's all written out, you know, to reform the Hampden County Retirement Board. You add to that, you know, we want to go it alone, is that a one-two punch? Look, look legislature, either reform them, or let us get out of it, but something's got to be done, better than just, we've got this miscellaneous reform in there, or just the, we want out. I'm just wondering if having two pieces of legislation saying, you know, maybe the lesser of evils for the legislature is to help us reform the Hampden, because I think with the reform that Lynn proposed most, it would be very, very positive for us. You know, it would take a couple of years, but it would be very positive. Again, and, you know, the other thing is, I'm, and I don't often speak for other people, I'm highly, you know, likely that other communities, like the town of Hampden, would join us if we wanted to do that, and I can think of others who are also equally disgusted with the Hampden County Retirement Board. So, we wouldn't necessarily be going it alone, but we'd be paving the way, as you said, but maybe this one-two punch of either reform it, or let us get out.
Yeah, I mean, the other legislation's already there, there's, you know, we should, it's already written, there's no reason to not...
But there's no impetus for the legislature to act on it.
Right, but, I mean, I think that should be filed, no matter what.
Oh, and it has been, it's been filed.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I mean, so this can, yeah, just be adding to that, might make that one more attractive.
The other thing, too, there's, they're going to be going through new committee appointments, too, you know, in the next couple of weeks for this session as well, so it'd be interesting to see who's, who's the chair of municipalities and regional government, and some of these other leadership posts that, that could bode well for us, or maybe not.
Maybe we ask for our state representative to be on those.
Yeah, be in municipalities and regional government, or bills in third reading, or something.
Can, can we, you know, this is, this is a long process, but can we do more work on figuring out, you know, what it would look like to join another retirement system, and the costs associated with that, and all that?
Yeah, yeah, we can do, to the extent that we're able to, we can, absolutely.
Lynn, you know as well as any of us that, that retirement fund, when that goes up, 8% every year, it's a bigger, bigger chunk, and we can't raise our taxes that high. So, it's worth the work, I think.
Completely agree. That's why I'm not willing to say we're completely stuck, because if we have an opportunity to save $100,000, $200,000, however much it is, it should be pursued.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you comment a little bit on, to, by what criteria another group might find us attractive or unattractive?
I think it depends on how they accept communities, whether they need a vote of their, their board, I'm imagining they would, they would probably run financials on what that looks like. I don't know, Ian, if Hampshire County gave you any indication on what they would look at if, if we were to ask to join them?
When I spoke to Patrick, he didn't specifically go into that, but I can certainly reach back out and inquire.
We'll also cast the net wider, too, and not just look at Hampshire County, it sounds like there's desire to see what else is out there, too, or even find one that's performing really well.
Look, the problem is if we are just adding numbers, then we, then we have the inverse of the Hampshire County, where there's fewer people of service, so the costs are less. If we just add more, then all of a sudden, we're upping the people in service, but...
Right, which then...
Maybe more to it than that.
Right, and would have a ripple effect on the administrative costs, because there's more people in the plan, and, yeah, it all has to be looked at.
But, but just to, so everybody's got their eyes open on this thing, you know, our, our retirees are approximately 48% funded for their retirement plans. My presumption is that if some other community, or some other retirement plan accepted us, they want our retirees to come in at at least the funding level their organization is funded at, if not at 100. And so, it's not going to be cheap, and it's not going to be free, you know... I mean, so it's not going to be cheap and it's not going to be free, you know, and it's probably going to be at least a lump sum infusion. My goal is to just stop this incessant eight percent per year, you know, killer for our annual budget, you know, but switching pension systems is not easy, it's not cheap, and not something we'd want to do, but if it can turn it, you know, it's the old decision of, you know, do you buy a new car, do you keep spending money on, on, on maintenance? You know, at some point, you just buy a new car and you save all that, that monthly costs of, of maintenance. For us, maybe putting a lump sum into a new retirement plan, you know, gets us, so we have annual increases more in the three or five percent rate, which just makes sense for the town.
Is that, that lump sum, is that something we could bond for, Ian?
Yeah. There are towns that have bonded their whole retirement plan, so the answer is yes.
I just, that, yeah, that'd be a hard sell.
So, very hard sell. It's a very hard sell.
Because, yeah, you're looking very long-term on that, but.
I mean, you're also talking, too, about our exit fee for Hampden County, and that's probably a sizable amount as well. So, that would have to be equated in the cost.
The, the part that worries me about joining another regional based on, is be based on present-day standings. We don't know what the future years look like. They have change in administration, change in board. We could end up in another situation like Hampden County, and so the only, all that to say, the only way we can control that is if it's ours, if, if we are administering it ourselves. So, just something to think about. We'll, we'll bring you back some more information. Might not be the next meeting, might be towards the end of February.
Just, just the last comment, that a similar discussion to this, and I see Mr. Chappelli in the, was happened many, many years ago with medical benefits, and at the time, a bunch of regional communities got together and formed the Scantic Valley Regional Health Plan, and, you know, that has saved us a lot of money, I don't know how many millions, but over the years. So, it can't happen, it has happened, we've done it in the past, when we got out of other, other plans, it wasn't easy, but here we are, twenty-five, thirty, so, some years later, after the Scantic Valley was formed, that's the best thing, I mean, last year, we had a zero percent increase in our medical, you know, fees for, for town employees. So, it does, it can work.
And, not to continue this, but I think, to your point, I think it, it's how it was set up. There's a voice from every community there that is vastly different than what is happening at the Hampden County Regional Retirement Board. And I think if you had a setup like that, we wouldn't be having this conversation, which is the legislation that we were arguing for to fix it. So, it's, it's frustrating.
Yep. Anything else? All right. Like I, I think, I think probably everyone would agree, no rush, you know, on this, but let's get some more information and keep talking about this.
Thank you for having this discussion.
Of course. All right. Next is, okay, next is, on our agenda is resetting the 2025 annual town election date. So, there's a lot of moving parts here. I'm going to try to explain this, I think, the best that I can. Basically, we uncovered a special act from nineteen eighty-eight that said that preliminary elections needed to be held twenty-eight days before annual town elections, where we typically set our annual town elections and our annual town meetings, the preliminary election would then land on the same day as our annual town meeting. So, obviously, you know, if we were to have a preliminary election, this year, we would have had a preliminary election and an annual town meeting on the same day. So, we took a look at options for how to adjust the schedule and making sure that that would not happen, because obviously, that would just be a, a huge lift for our town clerk, for our town, to have an annual town meeting and preliminary election on the same day. And obviously, and there's also just be a conflict with timing and everything. So, what we are proposing here is to reset the annual town election date one week earlier, on June third, so it would be the first Tuesday of June. This makes sense for a few reasons. When you look across the Commonwealth and when annual town elections typically occur, ours is one of the later ones, so this would be bringing us kind of more in line with where the rest of the state is holding their annual town elections. Also, the other piece of this is that I, I think what we should do, and Lynn and Mike and I talked about this, is probably propose a, that an article be put on our warrant at annual town meeting that rescinds the special act, so we are no longer beholden to this, where we have to hold a preliminary election exactly twenty-eight days before our annual town election. And then, you'll also see that there's an election calendar, proposed election calendar that's attached to the agenda. This was put together, but, you know, kind of looking at it, some of the dates, to me, seem like they're a little bit close. So, for example, the last date of object or withdraw nomination papers is May first, and the preliminary election would happen just five days later. Those are things that we're going to go back and kind of touch base with town clerk about to see where we can adjust this, because that's a really short timeline. But for the purposes of tonight, we just need to reset the annual town election date to be a week earlier, and then the calendar of when nomination papers will go out, all those things, we will work with the town clerk on and get all that ironed out and, and published. But does anybody have any questions about that? It's, it's really about setting the annual town election one week earlier, and then, you know, just kind of talking about putting an article on our warrant to rescind that Act of nineteen eighty-eight. Josh?
So, we can rescind the Act of nineteen eighty-eight because there was a town meeting vote to accept the Act of nineteen eighty-eight?
Yes, right?
Town meeting needs to rescind it, yeah.
I mean, we as a town, okay.
Is that a home rule petition? We'd then have to get it passed to the legislature as well? So, this isn't going to happen immediately?
Right. I, I, I need to go back and look exactly what was accepted and how it was, but.
We, we actually maybe even need to look into it further, because I think it may have been a ballot vote, actually, not a town meeting vote.
I'm sorry, it was a ballot vote, because it says at the end of the Act.
Yeah. It was an annual election ballot vote. So, it may be, we might have to look into it a little bit.
The other important piece that Mike found, do you want to talk to them about the two thousand six?
Yeah, so what happened was, the, the, the bylaw states that we need to have town meeting no later than the second Tuesday in May, but it doesn't state when the annual town election is. It just states that it needs to be held after annual town meeting. In two thousand six was the first preliminary we had since the nineties, and what that did was, it actually, the annual town election was in March. It was, then there was a conflict with the state primary, so it moved to May, and then because a preliminary was needed in two thousand six, the elections now moved to June. So, since two thousand six, historically, the annual town elections have been held in June, but they were actually always in late May, up until two thousand six.
Will you talk about the special town meet, or the town meeting to?
Oh, and then in two thousand six, they also tried to rescind the legislation and it failed.
On the ballot?
Actually, so that's a good point, that, that did go to town meeting, so I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe it rescinded, or maybe it failed the town meeting because it was supposed to go to ballot vote, that I haven't made it far enough to figure out yet, but.
I don't even remember my other question now. The, the dates on the right side, the MGLs and the Acts, those are, those are minimum dates, so we can, we can push things out, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I also just kind of looked at some of the MGLs just real quickly, and they don't speak directly necessarily to some of these, so there's, there's some confusion here. We're going to, yeah, talk to the town clerk and try to get this straightened out.
I presume most, all of them will say at least.
Yeah.
But I didn't look at them all yet either, but, yeah, I, we should push it out to make it comfortable for the clerk, but also not let this drag on forever.
Yeah, yeah. Mark?
What I don't see included in here is the provision for appealing a vote at town meeting, that there's a, there's a town meeting vote, people have a certain number of days to get signatures to appeal it into a, the town election, and that has also had to be considered when setting the, the time interval between the town meeting and all these steps it takes to potentially get a petition and then print the ballot to put this on the town election. And, you know, I'm not pretending I know what those intervals are, I just know that that's a, been in the past, a strong consideration for the distant, for the time interval between the town meeting and the election in town, more, more so even than the preliminary elections, which can be held well before town meeting.
Well, I mean, so it has been held before town meeting, but it should.
There's been five preliminary elections since nineteen eighty-eight.
Right, but they can't be held before town meeting.
Correct.
But, but.
In my research, they've always been held twenty-eight days before the annual town election. It has worked out that way, where it hasn't been on town meeting date. This year, it would have.
My only point is that between town meeting date and the final election, there is a provision for the allowance for a citizen's petition to appeal a voted town meeting, given a certain number of signatures to put it on the ballot. And I think we need to make sure that the interval we set between the town meeting and the election meets those, that criteria, that's all I'm saying.
So, you need X number of days after town meeting in order to get signatures and then?
You have a certain amount of time allowing to get those signatures.
And to get the ballot printed.
File it, to get the ballots, right, all that stuff, Josh.
That would take a long time.
Whatever, and I, and I don't have the number, the intervals off the top of my head, but I know that that's been a strong consideration in the past, which is one of the reasons we've always set town election for middle of June, because we needed, you know, the middle of May kind of a town meeting, we needed that time for that interval. That's all.
Do we need to set this by, we need to set this meeting, right? Because it has to be by February first, okay, yep.
And you have to set the date, but the calendar is subject to change. You don't have to set anything to do with the calendar, that, that all can be worked out. And then, especially when we put out outreach that, here are the dates, then we'll have everything ironed out.
Yep.
With that. But I will say that this has, in two thousand six, it was the same, these were the same dates. It was, May sixth was the preliminary, May thirteenth was town meeting, and June third was the annual town election. So, unless something has changed between now and then with the amount of time needed, this was a similar timeframe to that two thousand six.
Yeah, what's changed is the provision that was approved at town meeting, allowing for a petition to appeal a vote at town meeting.
Right.
And that's, and that's new.
Yep.
And when that came in, we moved the election one week further down the line.
So, when can, if we're voting on the, the election date, when can we expect to see the rest of these dates lined up on this, on this chart, so we, we know?
Yeah, I mean.
Two weeks, or is this?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly, but I think after we vote tonight, then we are going to go back to the town clerk and kind of let him know that this, this calendar seems a little too condensed, and to kind of take a second look at this, and then hopefully we'll get that information out soon.
Yep.
I just pulled up our charter, just for informational purposes, I couldn't remember the date, it's five days after the petition, or five days to submit a petition signed by three percent of voters.
After town meeting?
After town meeting.
Okay.
And then ten day, and then upon the petitions being certified, the select board shall within ten days after filing call of special election, it shall be held within thirty-five days after issuing the call.
So, it wouldn't even go to annual town election, it would go to a special election?
Yeah, well, I guess.
No, but the intent was to get it.
If, if, oh, yeah, if however, a regular special town election is to be held within sixty days, following the date the petition is filed, the select board may put the question or questions to voters at the same election. So, if it did happen, we want to put it on there. So, it's five days, so, I guess it's not as long. You just want to make sure you get it in time for everything to be printed.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I just don't know logistically if that's.
I would suggest setting the date for June third, and then if something comes up between now and February first, that we find out that that can't happen, we might have to call a special meeting to reset the election date. But as of right now.
We already have a date.
Correct, yeah, so.
So, we don't have to do anything, we have a date, the tenth, right?
Well, right now, if we.
So, we met the requirement to set a date prior to February first, right?
Right, yes.
So, I think the answer is, let's make sure we're doing it right, and if we need to, we can do it one more time and adjust it, which you said we would need to do anyway, but we don't need to, you know, I, I'd be very reluctant to change it now and then change it again, you know, because we, we don't have all the data. So, we don't have to act again tonight, we've acted. If we need to adjust it, we can adjust it February fifth, tenth, twelfth.
But, but right now, where it is set at June tenth is not workable, because twenty-eight days before is the day of annual town meeting, so it can't be on the date that we've set right now. So, either it's going to be June third, or it's going to be a week after on June seventeen.
And nomination papers won't be released until you have a date set, because everything back, everything goes off of that date.
Yep, yep. So, right now, we're at a date that doesn't work, so I think, I think we should vote on June, to make it June third, because right now, it seems like that's, you know, what makes the most sense, but if we need to move it to June seventeenth, then we come back and have a special meeting to do that. Makes sense?
I'm going to move, we set the annual town election for June third, twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, moving on to new business, we've got a public shade tree hearing decision appeal, so this is not an actual hearing, we don't need to follow the rules of a hearing. Are you Mr. Dunn? I assume, okay. So, we don't need to follow the actual rules of a hearing, we will discuss this appeal. I believe we've also got the tree warden online, and so just to kind of quickly summarize what's happening here, the documents are attached, an executive summary by the tree warden, as well as supporting documents provided by Mr. Dunn, who is at eighty-one Woolworth Street, and the tree is the tree, you know, towards the front of his property. And I think to quickly summarize this, there is a thirty-four inch eastern white pine that Mr. Dunn had asked to be taken down for numerous reasons, you know, I think the tree warden probably put it best when she said, it seems like this is a, you know, the wrong tree planted in the wrong place, because of the way that the tree grows with, you know, trees of this type usually grow in bunches. This one is planted by itself, so does not do as well in, you know, reacting to wind and other elements of the weather. It also does not react well to salt and other, you know, treatments that are usually carried out. It also, because of the way that the roots grow out, it interferes with sidewalks, roads, and a similar tree in a similar position on Benedict Terrace was removed a year ago or so. And also, I think another concern that Mr. Dunn had outlined was a safety concern that Woolworth Street has a lot of foot traffic because of its close proximity to the middle school. There have been branches that have fallen, and I think just recently, a larger branch that had fallen. And also, Mr. Dunn has, and, and the tree warden has seconded it, that, you know, while this tree in the twenty twenty-two tree assessment was deemed to be in good condition, it has deteriorated some since that time. It seems like either a, some type of car, or maybe a snowplow had damaged the tree. And so, there are safety concerns as well with this tree. The, you know, the, there was an objection made to taking down this tree by a resident, and so that's why we're here talking about it at the select board. And Leah, I guess I'll, I'll start off with you, and, you know, if you, there's anything that you want to add to, to what I summarized, please feel free to do so.
Thanks, Vinit. I think you did a pretty good job of kind of going over the, the main points here. It's, it's a very discretionary tree, as I know, at the beginning of the, just, of the beginning of the executive summary. It's not in the greatest condition in the sense of being where it is, and, and the species profile, however, it's been there a long time, it's, is it likely to fail in the next year or so? Probably. Probably not. You know, I did consider, since I've gotten my tree risk assessment qualification, I did consider what Davey had done in twenty twenty-two, along with what I had learned from getting the qualification, and, you know, like, like I said in the end there, that it probably is a moderate risk tree, it's likely, if there were a failure, it would be not a whole tree failure, maybe a bit higher up in the crown where that kink is, and from previous bud damage, so, you know, it's very, it's, it's one of those trees where it's not, you know, my heart isn't in it, however, on my own accord, no, I would not take this tree down. But since there was the request from the resident to have a hearing, it had been put on the radar, so that's kind of where I've been at with this one.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Dunn, thank you for joining us, I want to give you the opportunity to add anything, or, you know, anything that you'd like.
Yes, thank you for your time. I contacted Leah, my primary concern was the safety on this tree. It's the only one of this type in the entire tree belt along Woolworth Street, very tall. I've lived there for twenty-four years, and I've called the town numerous amount of times to have branches picked up. But to give you an idea on how, how much it's done, I've asked the DPW to provide me a list of the amount of work orders that they can go as far back, so they had records going back to two thousand seventeen, and this is going up through the end at two thousand twenty-four. This tree had eight calls during that time, and six of them happened to be in, between twenty-two to twenty-four. The one that really struck me was back in, in June of two thousand seventeen, that was a bright sunny day, there was no wind, the largest tree limb fell just after the kids passed to school, it was the last day of school, and it required the town to come and get, you know, bucket loader to come up, and they, you know, they had a work crew of, I think, four or five people to, to cut that down. This tree is very prone to losing its limbs, and it does create a safety hazard for me, or for me, my family, and also property risk, because, you know, when there is high winds, we do get a large amount of debris, you know, the big branches don't go as far to my house, but, you know, the smaller ones do, and it gets on the roof, and gutters and things, so it is problematic. I had contacted Leah, after the, the whole process really didn't address my concern from putting the add in the reminder, my concern was about safety, so after this denial, I, I wrote back to, to Leah and asked her to adjust really the safety concern on this, and she, you know, the comment came back that, you know, it's been there for many years, and likely rounding the corner from mature to over mature, and it survived the elements as a single tree. And won't read the whole thing there, but it's, it's outgrowing its, its, its area there. But particularly, you know, like, I would say, and this is Leah, I would say the likelihood of failure over the next two years to be low to moderate, and that, this is the part that's addressing my safety concern, I'm, I'm assuming, and the consequences of failure to be high to extreme. So I'm just asking you, you know, like, if you have a tree that is considered one of the top five trees in Massachusetts to lose limbs, that's also in the, the packet that you received, if you have roughly a hundred and fifty, or plus or minus, kids going to and from school, passing by my front door every day, there is a risk there, you know, from a, you know, wind and the branches falling down, so I'm asking you to consider that, and to let Leah go ahead and, and have this tree taken down.
Thank you. Anything from the board, any comments? Dan?
First, I just want to say thank you, like, I was looking at all your back and forth, and it was very professional and courteous to Leah as well, so I, I appreciate that. I took a, I did take a drive, know the area well, used to walk it when I went to Williams Middle School back in the day. What, maybe this isn't really a question for you, but really for the town, so if this tree were to be removed, and by the way, there's, it's very barren on that, it's like, the tree's massive, there's one big tree, and then there's no other trees.
Right.
So I personally would like to see more trees along the road, but is the town responsible for paying for this removal, or are we in a situation where it's the, the resident, similar to what we dealt with on Shaker Road, so?
I think that's up to us. I think it could go either way, I think that's our decision, is that correct?
I don't know, I was under the impression this would be the town that was paying for this, or at least now it was mentioned in the back and forth in the emails.
If, early on, you know, when we were going through the process, Leah did write down that if, if there was no objection, the town would take it down at, at the town's expense.
Speaking with Lynn earlier, I think that's certainly a possibility, I think the first decision that our board has to make is, are we allowing the tree to be taken down? Or not? And then are we asking the homeowner, or offering the homeowner to take it down at his expense, or is the town willing to pay for it? Is that correct, Lynn?
I believe so, I would defer to Leah to answer that specifically, I would caution, though, against the town paying for something that we're not proposing to remove, if Leah's, she seemed kind of in the middle on this one, but I, I'm not sure if her answer changes if it's being paid for by the town.
I can add, so I did have a conversation with Sean Gandy, who's the DPW director, his comments were reflecting, Lynn, what you're saying, that it's, you know, not, wasn't proposed by the town, and therefore, you know, being in good condition, it likely shouldn't be covered by the town. I also do want to add that I got the notice from the DPW invoicing staff that my tree cutting budget for FY twenty, or FY twenty-five, right, that I'm down to about thirty thousand for the remainder of this fiscal year, so I've basically ceased all removals and prudings other than high priority, high risk removals, and that'll be the case up until July one.
I also looked at, I'd also drove down the street just to look at the tree, and I, I do see it's a very large tree, it also looked, you know, it looked relatively healthy to my uneducated eyes, I'm hearing from Leah that, you know, it's in good condition, quote unquote, and as a tree lover, obviously, I think our, we all have a penchant, as I know this board has stated in the past, to kind of preserve as healthy trees as much as possible in town. I think that, you know, I think that in this situation, I think we're just, we have to, we're trying to balance the homeowner's preference with the true risk of tree failure against the loss of a venerable and healthy tree, and the cost of cutting it down, and I think we should take into account the chance that, you know, decisions like this do influence others in town, could we be encouraging others to more request a cut down healthy public trees because a nearest homeowner requested essentially? And I think that if we were to choose to allow to have it taken down, I, I just don't think, I, I don't see our budget allowing us to really, I don't think it's a good principle that we, we pay for this, because I think that, you know, our budget is, is very stretched, and essentially, I'm concerned that more requests are going to come, and we're going to have a very difficult time justifying that, you know, we can't do it in those cases if we approved it here.
Josh?
Yeah, I know Woolworth Street, well, this is not, there's some beautiful trees on the street, this is not one of them, in my opinion, and also, as someone who last year had a massive tree branch from high up fall in my yard during the microburst, I am certainly sympathetic, and don't want that to happen to anybody who happened to be walking by. So I, I am okay with it coming down, and would like some more trees to replace it, as Dan said, and, you know, that I have a couple new trees in my front yard that are, it's going to be a while, but they will eventually add to our tree canopy. But I, I think that if, if we don't have a policy in place, I think the policy does have to be, we don't pay for it, unless we, unless our tree warden tells us, because we, we couldn't do it, we would, it would, we'd hit a wall, and I know it's expensive, but we, every week, we got a new reason why our budget is getting kicked, and so I think that that is something we should go, doing, going forward, we were talking about a little bit before in the meeting, that we have tree warding, now that we have tree warden, we're getting a lot more, there's a lot more knowledge, and there's a process coming through on how to handle trees, and if we, we're going to hear a lot of these, I think, and in my time on the board, I think the first tree hearing we'd had in years and years was when I was on the board, now we've had four. So I think we do need to draw a clear line, but that being said, I am fine with it coming down, and I would like trees to replace it.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I think we've, we've hit a, a very unusual situation here, because having been warned, or told, or surmised that there's a risk, the town only has two options, do nothing, and if nothing happens, nothing happens, but if we do nothing and something should possibly happen, there'll be a lot of people saying, Mr. Dunn told you there was going to be a risk to this thing, and, you know, so, you know, it, it's like, once you're warned, can you now say no? And, and I don't know, I don't have the answer to that, because everybody in town's going to write us a letter saying that tree in front of my house is a danger now, whether it is or not, and so at some point, we have to fall back on our tree warden. So the issue for me is, we have an expert who said the tree is not in imminent danger, and if Leah believes that, then that's where we, where we have to, I think, be, be, you know, be maintaining that. On the other hand, if we say, you know, Mr. Dunn, if you don't like the tree, or you don't want the tree, and you want to trim the tree, or cut the tree, or take down the branches you think are worse, and we want to give them permission to do that, I'm fine with doing that as well.
Yeah, I think just to address what you said, Mark, I, I agree with you, but that's why we have a trained arborologist, or I'm not sure if I'm using the right term, arborist?
Arborist.
Yes.
I'll give it to you then.
Yeah, that's close. I think I was thinking of Harry Potter class arborology, but no, we, that's why we have a trained arborist, and so we have to defer to her, I, I would be very hesitant to ever say, she says a tree has to come down, and we say no, and I think they go the other way around as well.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Uh, yes, could you introduce yourself first?
William Chabelli, I live at seventy-three Woolworth Street, I'm Mr. Dunn's neighbor.
Okay.
So I have a little bit, I think a lot of personal knowledge about this particular tree, and I, I believe Mr. Dunn provided a package with, which included the DPW's times that they were at that, that street. This is, this happens every year, branches fall from this tree, it's not something, in fact, most years, it happens more than once. A white pine on a tree belt, I don't think would, was ever meant to be planted, I think it was probably left there when they built the street, but I don't think anybody would ever put a white pine on a tree belt, especially one in which a hundred, a hundred and fifty students a day walked by twice a day. I did take a picture of the tree, and I think Mr. Dunn gave a picture of the, took a picture of the trees as well, but this was about this, I'm sorry, I'll wait a second. I took this particular picture this morning, and it shows over the sidewalk, there's a forty-foot branch that is currently sitting over that sidewalk right now, along with hundreds probably of smaller branches. But some of these branches that fall off this tree in the wintertime, because it has pine needles to stay on all year long, they hold snow, whenever it snows, so when, when it actually snows six inches, seven inches, all those branches are leaning down, and I think white pines are probably one of the softest wood trees that, that exist, they break all the time, and they break over that sidewalk where the children are walking. So I, I don't think the tree is going to die tomorrow, but I think the tree is dangerous where it's located, in this particular area, being that it's on a school route, and kids are walking by every day.
Thank you for your comments, yeah, thank you. So I, I agree here with Josh, I think I, I am, you know, I'm somebody that cares deeply about our environment, I care deeply about the trees in our town, I think looking at all the facts here, though, we are looking at a tree, I think, that has enough red flags in terms of safety, in terms of the type of tree and where it is planted, and also, we do, I think, need to take seriously the interests and the concerns of our residents here as well. So I, I agree with Josh that I, you know, although this is not something that I like doing, this is, I think in this situation, something that I would be okay with, saying that the tree can come down, but I guess, Mr. Dunn, I wanted to ask you about, you know, I think you're hearing from the board that, you know, there's not an appetite here for the town to pay for the removal of the tree, is that something that you would do?
It wasn't something I was thinking about, quite honestly, I was encouraged actually by the early correspondence that I had back and forth with Leah, that, you know, if there wasn't any objections, then it was going to move ahead as coming down, so I would have to kind of evaluate that.
Yeah, I mean, and I think when I, when you, when this first came up, and I commented, I saw the email correspondence, right, I think it was about, oh, you paid two hundred fifty dollars for the advertisement, and then I'll move forward, so, I mean, I completely understand, you know, how, why, why you think that. Mark?
What was the impetus behind the original tree hearing, to, to potentially remove this? Was that urine?
It would be based on my request, and then, I mean, you know, my original emails.
So you requested it, and Leah held the tree here?
And then she outlined the process, which is putting the advertisement for two weeks in the reminder, and then there's the tree committee hearing, and that's, you know, if, if anybody came up and objected in the town, which one person did, then the, the only way to go forward is here, through the select board.
Might have missed a disconnect there, because if you, if you're just requesting to take it down, that's not a request from the town to take it down, if I'm correct, right?
Right, but he still has to follow the process that he laid out.
I know, but if that, if there hadn't been an objection at that point, that doesn't mean it would have come down, that would have given you the permission to take it down. So I, I think there was a mis-
Well, that's not quite what was written, but yeah.
No, I understand that, so maybe, and I, I'm certainly, like I said, I'm sympathetic to the, the safety issues here, but we, we're talking vaguely still, we don't know what this is going to cost, and maybe that could be helpful to us, not that we're saying, I, I could see a scenario where we could have some sharing, I don't know if the rest of the board thinks that, but I, I wouldn't, I can't propose that now without knowing, without having an estimate from, from either side.
I personally-
If I could jump in, I don't know that, I don't know what the exact cost would be, but I can guarantee that at a minimum, a crane would be needed, likely also a log truck, so I would assume this would be a couple thousand dollar removal.
And a police detail, the road will need to be partially closed.
And, and Leah, I, I know that in the executive summary, you mentioned that a similar tree was taken down on Benedict Terrace, was that also done at the homeowner's cost?
That was not, that one was done at the, well, it hasn't been removed yet, it was approved for removal, that one is in a bit of a smaller tree belt, kind of in that corridor where the microburst went through, and pulled up another similarly sized oak tree, so based on the location, and, and kind of similar weight out, you know, if that tree goes, it's, it's guaranteed to hit a house in any direction, so that one was approved for removal for that, but it hasn't been removed yet, and I think the kink on the top of that one might have been a little bit worse than the one on, the one on Woolworth, but I'm not positive.
Uh, Dan and Anthony?
So we, we just repaved Woolworth as well, I don't know, a month ago, maybe, two months ago, something like that, and then I noticed, when I drove by, the sidewalk was also replaced right by the tree, so my question to you, Leah, is, do you foresee additional growth of the, the roots that would affect the newly paved road, as well as the sidewalk that was just replaced? Should the tree-
I don't know that the roots would necessarily grow in that sense, because where they were cut, they'll likely shoot out a lot of smaller, weaker style roots, so you'll see it around town where a, a tree was previously pruned, and there's the old pruning cut that you can see, and there's a hundred little sprouts sticking out of it, I would imagine that- can see, and there's 100 little sprouts sticking out of it. I would imagine that any root that was cut during either of those paving projects would be doing the same. It's an epicormic root growth, basically. So I wouldn't imagine anything that's shooting out would be anything strong enough to buckle a pavement of any kind.
Okay, thank you. And just the last point I wanted to make. So I certainly, I think we all agree, we don't want to be taking trees down. But in, in this situation, I, like, I drove down this road and it's completely bare. I, I feel like if this tree were to be removed, number one, who's, who's going to pay for it? Is it going to be a combination of the resident and the town? The other component is the types of trees that, that should be placed there and planted there. And we really should be putting more trees on that section of the street. And I just want, I'm curious what, how you feel, Mr. Dunn, about if this tree were to be removed, would you be, I guess it doesn't really matter what, what your opinion is, but I'm just curious. Would you want to see, would you want to see more trees on that street?
It was just this tree that's, that's causing the problems, my concerns. So the only other thing, I mean, if it, if it, if this doesn't come down, I guess is the, the things based on what was said in the correspondence that I received, that it, that discretionary pruning could take place. And I guess, Leah, would I, I'd be asking you, would you be doing that now? Doing the discretionary pruning? Because at one point, it, it kind of suggested that it may not be worth it because of the condition of the tree.
I think that it could be valuable to do. If we, if the tree is not approved for removal, I would be happy to put it on the pruning list. I personally wouldn't be doing it. It would still be Northern Tree Service or tree contractor. I will preface that it's because of the type of tree it is, pruning, we can get out some of those weaker limbs and those dying limbs. However, there will still continue to be limb shed to a certain extent. So it won't be bulletproof and it won't make it this perfectly stable tree, but it, it'll reduce the amount that's, that's coming down, for sure.
I think the picture Attorney Chabelli showed us is a little, I think it startled me a little bit with the limb hanging out over the, and then going straight up over the sidewalk. Is that, I presume that one can't be trimmed because it's, is that integral? Is that, or, I don't recall the picture. Is there another, is that, that's an offshoot of the, the main trunk?
It is. It goes like at a 90-degree angle. Mr. Chairman, can I just add a little bit of personality?
Yeah, sure.
Information. In 2010, I filed an application with the town to remove the exact same tree that was on my front yard. And our tree warden back then was Mike Rapel, who was the head of the DPW, and he approved it. But he required me to pay to remove the tree. Cost me $1,500 in 2010. So I, I think it's kind of a significant burden to tell a private citizen that probably is going to cost three, $3,500 today or more, to pay for removing the tree that's on, that's the town's tree. So I don't know if there's a possibility of sharing in that cost, but that's a significant amount of money to ask a private citizen to pay.
Andrew?
I am, so I, I came into this hearing with totally an open mind. I, the first thing I heard was Leah saying that if it was up to her, the tree wouldn't be removed. And frankly, the first hurdle that I've kind of tried to think over, and as I've heard a lot of the discussion, is whether or not the tree should even come down. I think that, I think that, or give permission for that. I think that that's possible. I think that I'm more open to that. But I do think that, thinking ahead and the future years, I, I do think that it makes a lot of sense for the town to pay for trees that the tree warden recommends, proposes we do for safety, for whatever reason. But to set a precedent, and it may not, there may have been no policy in the past, but, and it may have been done different ways. But to say that we will pay for trees that the tree warden hasn't, doesn't compel us to take down, or doesn't think even would be taken down if it was up to her, I think that could put us into a tougher position. We may find ourselves with more of these very difficult conversations. And to make it more clear to people, for the future, I think it is good to have a policy where the town is not paying for trees that the tree warden did not think needed to come down. And that's just my opinion.
Josh?
I, I think that's certainly reasonable. I, I just think there's other parameters that are involved. The, the big one to me is that, as Leah said, it's, the consequences are extreme, and that's because hundreds of kids wa, do go under there. And I think that that is, you know, every decision like this has to be independent, to a certain extent, has to be independent, I think. If it was somewhere else, if, if somebody didn't like it, there was no sidewalk there, and we had this on Shaker Road, we said, go nuts, you can remove the tree, you're going to pay for it, you're going to replace everything. I do think this is a different situation.
Mark?
I, I still go back to the, we've been warned kind of thing. And Mr. Chabelli offered me a, a way out of here. I, I think that we, I think the select board ought to allow the tree to come down and, and require that, in order for that to happen, the homeowner contribute up to $1,500 or $1,500 of the cost of removing the tree. That gives the, first of all, it's, it's the wrong tree in the wrong place. Everybody said it. It's not the kind of, it's not a shade tree. I don't care what anybody says. It's a, it's a white pine tree. You know, we've got shade trees everywhere. But, but the precedent would be that, you know, if the homeowner really wants to come down and the, and the, we perceive it to be a potential, a potential risk to public safety. And I think that's where this is, whether we think it's going to last for six months or 16 years. You know, then the, what I would like to do is, is author, have the select board approve the removal of this tree with the provision that the homeowner contribute $1,500 toward the cost of it.
If we did that, would it be more advisable to do a percentage? Because who knows what the tree is going to cost? It might be better for the homeowner, or worse for the homeowner.
I'd pick $1,500 because Mr. Chabelli said that's what he said 15 years ago. So I don't really care.
And that's why there's not a tree on my front yard, because they never made me pay for a new tree. Although I would have loved for the comfortable one there.
The problem with the percentage is it's a, it's an unknown. This is, this is.
Then you would have a defined.
We could walk out of here with a, now, if you want to do either or, you know, maximum $1,500 or X percentage. I'm, you know, I'm just trying to find a solution where the homeowner walks away feeling good about it. We feel that we've taken the, the actions toward potential or perceived or possible public safety issues. Got rid of a tree that, yeah, nobody wants to cut down trees, but, you know, if this was a forest of a whole bunch of trees, of white pines, I'd feel very differently than, it's clearly the wrong tree in the wrong place. And everybody said it.
Yeah, and I, and I think also, I think Dan touched on this. We, we were able to read the correspondence between the tree warden and Mr. Dunn. We, we saw, we, we were able to see that Mr. Dunn, you know, has gone about this the right way. And I, you know, Mr. Dunn's not a frequent flyer who's here complaining to us about everything. This is the first time, you know, that I've, I've met you. And, and, and I know that you probably have not wanted to spend your time sending these emails, and you probably don't want to be here. But this is, you know, serious enough where you've felt like you've needed to take these steps. So, you know, and I think that kind of just goes back to my point of also taking into consideration our residents' concerns and, and their thoughts on this. You know, like I've, I've already said, I'm, I'm fine with voting to take down the tree. Whether we want to do 1,500 or a percentage, you know, I'm open to either one.
50%, or 1,500, the larger, 50% or $1,500. That's what I'll throw in.
Yeah.
The only, the only other, I mentioned this already, the only other concern is, what about planting more trees along that pathway? I mean, there's literally like 300 yards, maybe 400 yards of just, it's empty.
Dan, that, that's on our forestry budget. We can ask the, the tree warden and the DPW to do that. That's not Mr. Dunn's responsibility.
I'm hearing from, from Leah that numbers are tight. We know we're going to have a tight budget, and I just.
But, but whether this tree stays or goes, that doesn't impact whether we plant more. I mean, there's.
But that can be part of, that can be part of the decision. That's, I'm just putting it out there.
All you're doing is forcing her to use part of a discretionary forestry budget on this property or this street.
I just recommend driving down that.
Well, I have. I just think that.
Completely empty.
I think that we have a, a tree warden to decide what the highest priorities are for tree plantings in town. We're talking about a removal of a tree here. I agree, Dan, we need to plant trees. I'm just not sure this is.
I think you're looking at both of us. I'm opposed to that side of it, but it is the town property. So I mean, that, if you put more trees, that's fine. Doesn't have to be this year type of thing. I was just more concerned about the safety.
Do other people get to comment on this, or will you sit in sidelines?
Well, I, I think we're probably wrapping up our discussion.
As the person who opposed the initial cutting.
Oh, okay.
I might have some.
Sure, sure, you can come up.
So Pat Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road. I'm the one who initially opposed the cutting of the tree. I did so because I didn't feel that the tree was in that bad a shape. I understand what Leah said. And by the way, I'm not an arborist. It did obviously have a hit with a vehicle at some point. It seems to have recovered nicely. And yes, it sloths off branches. All white pines do that. All pitch pines do that. All pines in general do that, especially when you put a lot of load on the branches. So probably not the best tree for the site, but the tree doesn't look that bad to me. Again, I'm not an arborist. I do want to caution the board, and I think Mr. Lamb has mentioned this, that you have to be careful when you take into consideration when homeowners want trees removed on public land. This is a public shade tree, even though Mr. Gold doesn't think it's a shade tree. Actually, by law, chapter 87, is a shade tree. And there's a process to go through with that. It is not deemed a hazardous tree by the tree warden. Therefore, it does not have to be cut. It can be cut, but you have to be careful how you do that. In other words, you could expend town funds on removing all of these trees that people don't like on tree belts. There's other white pines. There's white pines on my tree that constantly drop limbs. Will those be removed too, at a cost of $35 to $5,500 per tree? What about a red pine that maybe has a little bit of hollow in there? Are you going to remove that too, even though it hasn't been deemed a hazard tree? Then you're going to expend a lot of money. And you don't have that in the budget, so I know that for a fact. Also, you're talking about tree planting. A common strategy used by different towns is to have the, if the homeowner wants the tree removed and it is agreed to be removed, then they replace the caliper width of the tree with other trees, usually a three-inch caliper. This is a 31-inch tree. That would be 10 additional trees paid for by the homeowner and then replanted by either the tree committee, the town, or a contractor at some point in the future. So just want to throw that stuff out there. So, you know, you, you can open up a Pandora's box by all of a sudden saying, okay, we're going to cover costs of these trees. We're going to throw 1,500 here, 2,000 here. We'll do this magic number. But when more homeowners approach you, you should have a plan in place, how you're going to do this, what's the percentage cost, or is the homeowner going to do the whole thing? And if it is a hazard tree, obviously the town takes it down quickly. And that's why we also need funds in the hazard tree removal budget to remove those hazards when they're identified. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Josh?
I, I agree with a lot of that. I, I think if my time on the board has proved anything is that this board is willing, it, it does not take these decisions lightly. I can't imagine how much.
We're talking a lot.
Yeah, we, today, we had, last year, we had three hearings on Shaker Road. We take this very, very seriously and don't do this lightly. So I, I think that, I'm not terribly worried about setting a precedent and making it, we're not rubber stamping it, clearly. We've talked a long time today. I am not willing to vote on funding partially until I know what the town's responsibility would be. So I'm, I'm not going to vote on this tonight. I want to know exactly how much it will cost and how much it would cost to replace these trees or put trees on there. So I, I'm not ready to do that tonight without having a number.
I also, I kind of see this as two different things. I think we can, I think we could take a vote on whether the, you know, we say that the tree can come down or not. And then we can also take a vote on the funding part of it.
You could do that. Can I just make one point? Just because, you know, regarding the liability that, that's been discussed. I mean, I do think that as a town, as a board, we've done our due diligence in the sense that we have our expert tree warden give an opinion on, on the health of the tree and whether it needs to come down as a hazard. But another point of it is, you know, it's also possible that if the town were to expend more money out of their, her paltry budget, that means there could be a higher priority hazardous tree that she doesn't cut down because she doesn't have the money. And that is far more likely potentially to cause a problem liability-wise than this tree hypothetically. So it's just another, you know, there's only so much to spend essentially on the priorities. And there's always that possibility.
It's almost an actuarial decision. If there's a 1% chance of having something terrible happen, or a 20% chance of something not so bad.
I mean, part of the tree warden's decision, I'm sure, is like, how much, what are my resources? And then, but I can prioritize based on knowledge of that, right? So I'm sure if her budget was hundreds and hundred thousand dollars, maybe she would have said, this tree is not perfect, let's replace it with a perfect tree. But we're not in that situation. We have to allocate scarce resources.
Anything else? Any motions?
Yeah, if you want a motion, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that, that we authorize, that we allow the, the removal of this tree with the homeowner required to pay 50% of the cost, not to exceed $1,500 for that removal.
Any seconds? Yeah, I, I think, I'm also just kind of uncomfortable throwing a number out there at this point. I would, I would vote to either, you know, I would, I would take just a vote on whether the tree removal was allowed or not. And that, that's what I, I would like some more information about how much this would cost.
You could table the discussion if you'd like. We've, we've done that in the past for these. So that's totally, you're just, the board.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay voting to remove the tree, but I, I don't think anything's going to happen if we do that. So I, we might as well put it all together. But, pleasure of the.
I'm comfortable making a motion to remove the tree at the owner's expense, but we could revisit it if, if there was more information.
I, I'm fine with going that direction as well. I mean, I think, I think just at least getting part of it taken care of, these focuses, you know, what needs to happen next. And so that's what my thinking was on that.
I, I do want to make a comment on Mr. Carnahan's remarks, because I, I do, I do agree with much of what, what Mr. Carnahan had said. And I think we're going to continue to come across this if we don't have something that's like written in stone that, that says in this situation, it's going to be X amount percent for the homeowner and for the town. And I just, I don't, I feel like it is a slippery slope. Like, this will come up often. It's going to happen again in a few months. I'm sure we'll have another meeting. And every time, it's, every situation's a little different. But I feel like we need to have a policy that we can adhere to every single time, because otherwise, it's, it's just going to be very difficult to make these decisions, as it already is difficult for us to make this decision. So I feel like it's, it's on, it's on the board to come up with a policy that, that maybe isn't perfect, but we have something to, to guide us through these decisions, because it's, it's going to be a slippery slope, you know, in the, in the future here, so.
I mean, I think that our policy should be to listen to the judgment of the tree warden, except perhaps in exceptional cases. I mean, for example, we could direct the tree warden to, in a situation, hypothetically, in a different tree, like she judges it has, like, it's in good condition with some defects, quoting from her report. And she, if we, if she wanted to make a judgment about a percentage of like, how hazardous it was, or make a judgment like that, we could consider that. But as of right now, I think that the policy to be very clear for future select boards and the, for the knowledge of the towns' people, if the tree warden thinks it's, needs to come down, then we'll pay for it. But if it's the nearby homeowner wanting it to come down, and the tree warden thinks it does not need to come down, then we could give the permission to do it. But I personally don't think the town should be compelled to pay for it. I think that's a clear.
That's my point.
Exactly. Exactly. So I think that that would be a clear policy.
Yeah, Josh?
But I, just, what I keep going back to in Leah's report, a moderate risk rating with severe consequence. That's not, that's not good. I would venture to say that's bad. But that being said, I would like to put a price on it. But that being said, I would like to put a price on it. So, I, I think, I would rather just table it, we'll come back, and then we can figure out exactly what we're, what we're looking at. I think that this is, and the other part is, we have a tree warden who is an expert at this. We also have folks who are in their house, looking out, seeing what happens with the tree every day. And I think that, not that, I'd rather a tree hearings than dog hearings, but a tree hearing, I would want people to see, if they see something, I want them to bring it up, especially in a, in a place where there is a lot of risk to our kids. You know, my next four years, my kids are going to be going down that street, and a lot of other people. So, that's just where I'm at. I, but I, I just want to see what, I want to know what we're working with here.
Yeah.
And so, I'm, I would be, hate to make you come back, but I'd like to table everything.
Josh, what information should we be gathering in the interim? Because just to come back to repeat this entire discussion, you know, what, what additional, you know, and I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, when we come back, what numbers do we need?
Oh, actually, how much is it going to cost to remove it?
And that's, is that, I mean, is that sufficient?
I, I think so. You know, what if it's thirty thousand dollars?
I, I hear you. That, that's fine, but maybe we also want to know other information. I just don't know.
Wow, no, to me, that.
Go ahead, Lynn.
So, what I wrote down is that you'd like to know how much to take the tree down, how much to plant additional trees. Do you know, do you want that number, and how many trees, if you want that? And I also am curious if you want data on how many good trees, or moderate trees with severe risk are in our pool, because the town is completely built out, and almost every single tree that falls in this town is going to hit something. So, I, I think you need some, I would think you would want some context there. The tree budget's eighty-three percent expended. There's eight thousand dollars that was budgeted for twenty-five for plantings. Not entirely sure how much of that is left for twenty-five. I would imagine most of that spent because planting happens, you know, in the beginning of the fiscal year, or maybe at the end. I don't know if Leah knows off the top of her head, but if you want some additional data, we could prepare that too. But that, that's what I was initially thinking for a follow-up.
Okay.
If we're going to table it, I mean, I think that it's an opportunity, like as Dan said, and as I've been saying, to have an actual policy here, because this is a kind of a case study, and this conversation's gone on for a very long time. We've literally been saying, it's been going on in circles almost. So, I think it would be, help us to take this opportunity to think of an actual policy. We don't have to discuss it right now, but like, for the, when we bring this up, I mean, I think that if we came up with a policy, it doesn't have to be what I suggested or what Dan suggests, but, suggested, but I think that it would help us in the future to have much more streamlined discussions and criteria.
All right. So, let's get.
Could I have one, just one question based on what Lynn had just said, that, you know, the trees, you know, almost any tree that falls is going to hit something. And so, I am, that just made me think about what Leah had written, that, you know, it's going to be coming to, this is a mature tree heading to being overmature, and if it does fall onto my house, who's responsible for that at that point?
A lot of factors get looked at in that, given the rating that it's been given by the tree warden, and it depends on how it's hit too. So, I actually can't give you a definitive answer. If it's a weather event, that's one thing. If it's a car that hits it and it deteriorates it.
Maybe I can go to my lawyer here. Because I believe that if, if I have a neighbor, and it's in their, a tree's in their thing, and I have concern that it might fall on my property, and if it does, they would be held liable. Is that? They have knowledge of the tree being unhealthy and/or being a risk, then they have liability.
As the writer, one blog post on tree law, that's not, that's not the whole story, but that is getting.
I, I think.
I was just going to say, Leah would be better to speak to that, but we do, we have what a lot of homeowners don't have, and that is a health and, a health index on our trees. So, that would be looked at as well. So, there's a lot of factors. It's hard to say for certainty.
So, let's.
I was wondering if I could just speak briefly on the risk assessment and how that's determined. So, for the likelihood, the risk, overall risk is a major C combining the likelihood of failure as well as the likely, the severity of a consequence. So, when looking at the likelihood of failure that did end up being possible, it is possible this could happen between all of the root changes, you know, the, the upper, the stuff in the upper crown that I had mentioned. So, when I was considering the tree failing, I didn't necessarily mean an entire tree failure, just a large enough failure event where the tree would be, you know, considered dead, whether it be actually dead or not. So, like a topping to it. And then for consequence of failure, because of the school being there, it's considered the, the consequence of it hitting somebody below. So, with the school being there, the sidewalk, I'm assuming is pretty occupied frequently, occupancy rate is considered when looking at the severity of a consequence. So, that's where that became severe. If it fell and hit a person, that would be a severe consequence. So, then you take the severe consequence combined with the possible likelihood of failure and put it into the major C that ISA has created, and that's where the moderate risk rating comes out. So, my assumption is, is when Davey had done the inventory back in twenty-twenty-two, this was pre, you know, the road getting done. I don't know if that was pre the sidewalk project or not, but of course, maybe that was limited data that they hadn't had at the time either. So, just knowing the, the tree as, as a whole and it being there and having that response growth that it's developed, they probably said, oh, it's, it's not likely that a whole tree would fail. So, that's kind of what that all means.
Great. Thank you, Leah. So, let's, I think we do need to table this discussion at this point. I think let's, if we can gather the information that Lynn mentioned, that would be really helpful. I also think that there is value, some, you know, at times when it seems like we're kind of far apart here amongst the board, you know, gives just us more time to think about it, digest it, and, and think through it. So, unfortunately, I'm sorry that we can't come to a resolution tonight, but we'll revisit this at our next meeting.
So, whose responsibility, you were going to get the quote for the tree removal just to see what figure, right? Is that one of the action steps?
Yes. So, it's, it's easy for us to get a quote. I don't want to speak for the board, but it, I don't think there's anything that would preclude you from getting your own quote, because maybe you get a better price than we do. But we have a contract, so we would go to our contractor and ask them to look at it.
Okay. Yeah. So, nothing, you know, for you to do in the interim. You know, you can come to our next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Carnahan.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next up, the HERO Act. So, there's a memo attached about the HERO Act. The HERO Act, although it's passed, for it to go into effect, needs to be adopted on the local level. So, Lynn has, you know, attached, or put together a memo about it, also included model articles for town meeting, and the HERO Act, you know, is in place to give tax exemptions relief to veterans through property taxes. And, you know, there's some, some different, different ways that it's, it's gone about differently here with adjusting for COLA and, and which, you know, I think legislature has deemed it to be an important way to, to do this. And so, this, you know, I don't know, Lynn, if you have anything else to add, but I think, you know, we've probably had a chance to look at the memo, and it's something that's, you know, been in the news and, and been talked about. And, you know, I'm in support of this. I think that this is an important thing for us to do. I think, you know, in, when we take a look at our town and increasing costs and every opportunity that we can to, you know, lighten that, that burden on our seniors, and, you know, we should be taking those opportunities to do so. And so, you know, I think that what we'd be talking about tonight is just to put these articles at town meeting. It's not something that we can approve. It has to be approved at town meeting. Any comments, questions about this? Mark?
Yeah, many of the other programs that we put together for tax abatements, we put a cap on. And I was wondering if there's any consideration of putting a cap on this of whatever the number, number is, are we going to have this without limit, only because that allows us the budget? And without a cap, there is no budget.
I think there is a cap, because it can only go up to a hundred percent of the existing. Is that correct? That's how.
But that's each person. It's a cap.
Oh, you mean a cap for the whole town?
Yeah. I mean, I was thinking of a dollar cap.
I see. I'm sorry.
Up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Like what we have for the, the seniors.
Senior abatement, right.
And we do have our experts here to answer questions.
I'm like myself an expert, but I would say I don't think that's possible in the sense of how do you decide which service-connected disabled veteran gets it and which one doesn't?
Well, you could have a proportional, let's say you hit the, let's, we're spending, what, seventy thousand on it or something?
Right now, we're not, I.
So, if you put a much higher number, it would just could affect proportionally all of them.
Seventy-something thousand is only going to be if we approve it at a hundred percent increase now. That's not what we're paying right now. And the increase is only going to be for the hundred percent we would be upping it. We're still going to get the reimbursement for the first half that we're getting now.
I understand.
So, right now, if you're service-connected between ten percent and ninety percent, you get four hundred dollars a year off your tax. And we're not talking about large numbers here either, considering what these people, these folks have done. If you're a hundred percent service-connected, which it's not an easy thing to get to, and it usually means you're pretty, for lack of a better word, you're pretty, like, you know, in the military, due to the military, you get a thousand dollars off your taxes. We get a percentage back from the state for those, and we're still going to get that same percentage back from the state for that piece. What we're asking is that each, according to the HERO Act, the people from ten to percent to ninety percent would get eight hundred dollars, and that four hundred dollars for that second half, we would be a hundred percent liable for. And the same with a thousand dollars.
Leah, can you just go back? What do you mean by ten percent? Can you just explain what you mean that's?
So, in, in the VA world, you can be service-connected, which is a VA disability, and it can range anywhere from ten percent.
So, that's the disability?
That's the disability rate, correct.
So, if somebody has a disability rate of ten percent to a hundred percent.
Ten percent to ninety.
Ninety percent. Then they would be eligible for this tax abatement?
Well, right now, they already get four hundred dollars.
Okay.
But the state contributes back a portion to the town.
You said about fifty percent of that?
I think it's seventy-five. It's seventy-five percent, I believe.
So, so the proposal is for it to do what?
So, that's, well, right. So, the second half of what I was saying was what we're asking is, with the HERO Act, you, to increase from four hundred to eight hundred for those people who are ten percent to ninety percent, but we would be a hundred percent responsible for that second four hundred dollars. But we would still get back the seventy-five percent of the first half, and the same thing would happen in accordance if you're a hundred percent service-connected. We would still get back the seventy-five percent of the thousand, but we would pay the full hundred percent of the second thousand.
So, I think we understand that. The question I have is that how many people in town, based on your population of service veterans, would be eligible for that, and I'm only going to talk about the additional four hundred dollars, because the first part, we've already committed to. So, it's the second four hundred dollars that the town would be entirely responsible for.
But that's what I'm saying. So, if they have the four hundred dollars already, they're going to get the eight hundred, and it's the same with a hundred percent. You're not, this isn't going to be a new thing. So, if somebody comes in to the town and they're service-connected, and once they meet the eligibility requirements for the abatement, they're going to get the two thousand dollars versus a thousand.
And I understand that. My question is, how many people currently live in town who are eligible for this, this current four hundred dollars that the state reimburses, would then be eligible for eight hundred dollars to the town?
Sixty, yeah, thank you.
It's in the memo.
It's at the bottom of the.
I apologize. I didn't realize you were looking for the numbers. But yeah, it's, I think sixty-six, and we went to thirty-two right now. We have at four hundred. I think the number's thirty-two that maybe we're at right now for the four hundred. But total, I think it's a sixty-six right now, a total. And the three that are in there that we're not putting into the equation, those are our Gold Star families, and they're already get, they pay no taxes in Long Meadow, and so be cut, you can't be more than a hundred percent paid, so they don't affect the equation.
Great. And for the folks watching at home, this is our Veteran Services Officer, Lynn Bultora. Dan?
No, I was just saying, Mark's over here crunching numbers. I mean, these are, it's called the HERO Act. This is, this is for our veterans. I mean, what are veterans given, all of us in the community, and we still have gentlemen, three gentlemen here who still serve our community. I'm not going to sit here crunching dollars and cents over, you know, ten, twenty dollars. I mean, this is a no-brainer to me. I mean, if someone wants to step up on town floor at a town meeting and say, our veterans deserve X amount less of reimbursement, I mean, go for it. But I'm not going to sit here tonight and start crunching numbers saying that we're not going to give you, our heroes, what you deserve. And I just feel uncomfortable even crunching these numbers because of what you have all done to all of us and the sacrifices you've made, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I think that this is a situation, I think you made the point because you were trying to explain like a cap wouldn't like be off the seventy or whatever it is now, but I, I don't think there really needs to be any cap on, on however many veterans come and take advantage and avail themselves of this in our town.
You agree.
Anything else? Okay. So, no vote needed or anything, right? This is just, or?
I think we're looking for support that you are willing to put these on the town meeting warrant, because if you are not, the deadline for citizen petitions is approaching the next week, and there is desire from residents to prepare a petition if this is not going to be on the town meeting warrant.
Okay. So, I move to support the two model articles provided in the attached memo to the agenda to be placed on our twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Oh, you want to say something?
Earl Godfrey.
Yes, please come on.
One fifty-six Barrington wrote, if you're going to put these on the town warrant, we, the veterans that are represented here, and myself, or the others that I represent, would like to know that the warrant article for the increase would be listed specifically at a hundred percent increase.
Oh, okay. So, in the, the second article where it's highlighted?
It has to say that, because you could go from zero to a hundred.
Got it. Okay.
It could be a percentage.
Okay. So, I, I will amend my motion slightly to include that the, where it is highlighted, that it will say one hundred percent.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? All right. Great. Thank you, and thank you all for joining.
Thank you so very much.
And thank you on behalf of your American Legion posts, Disabled American Veterans, the past president, past commander, State Commander of Disabled American Veterans. And what else are we? Long Meadow Veterans Council, which you may not know exists, but it does. I'm a member of that, and, and all the rest of our veterans. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Can I say one more thing? I'm just going to jump in. Can I say something? I don't know if you all have met personally Earl Godfrey, but I'm going to take this for a second. Don't even start with me. Just so you're aware, Earl is in his eighties. He is, he was a pilot in Vietnam. Earl still, as well as Richard, and they do claims for veterans who need to get a service connection disability, and, but for them, I would not be able to be as successful as I am. Additionally, so you know, he, like, I can't keep up with him sometimes. He does all these things. He is also the commander of the American Legion in Long Meadow, and he is also the president of the Long Meadow Veterans Council, and it's just really important to me, especially at a forum like this, to acknowledge that, because he rarely, rarely lets me, and this time I just got to do it, and he didn't get a choice.
Yeah, he's blushing.
But thank you very much for your support.
And we all love trees. Well, thank you all for joining us. Thank you for your service. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Okay. Next up is the district local technical assistance request approval. And so, this is a vote to authorize the select board chair to sign letter, the letter of support. And so, this deals with our climate action plan. Lynn, do you want to explain a little more?
Yeah. So, PBPC Pineapple Valley Planning Commission put out a call to communities to submit DLTA projects. We have submitted one. Due to the timing of the select board meeting schedule, we had to have this in. And so, as you'll see in this letter here, I signed it, but it really needs to come. I signed it, but it really needs to come from the Select Board. And so we committed to bring this letter forward to you to seek approval, and then we would substitute your name in for mine to make it official if the board chose to. If you choose not to to do this, we'll just withdraw our application. But this will further our climate action plan work that PBPC has been doing in conjunction with the Energy and Sustainability Committee. This is really the next, a next phase of that.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, Mark?
What's the downside? And, you know, do we, is there any chance we don't get funding for this?
There's chances we don't get funding. It goes into a pool. PBPC gets to decide. But it, we normally get funded. And then the downside would be that if we were putting this project over another one potentially, but we don't have another project to submit for this type of funding.
All right. Anything else?
I just noticed in your letter that you have Corinne listed as the project manager. And would that just be you or someone else?
Too soon.
It'll, it'll definitely be Amir, who is our new energy manager. And then I, it will either be me or just Amir.
Okay.
Or both of us.
All right. Anything else? All right. So I will, I move that we authorize the Select Board Chair to sign the letter of support.
Can I argue that you shouldn't make the motion since it's you that's being authorized?
Okay. Well, I was just waiting for somebody to do it.
That's just, well, just a call for a motion, but I think that's.
Go ahead. Somebody else take it.
I move that that we have the Select Board Chair draft the, or sign the District Local Technical Assistance Request Approval Letter. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. Great. All right. Next up, we're going, moving into our street closure applications. We've got a street closure, a couple of street closure applications for the lacrosse jamborees over on Russell Fields. These are for Sunday, April 27, and Sunday, May 4. Any comments, questions, motions?
How will we approve the lacrosse events for closer applications for April 27 and May 5, 2025, noting the conditions put on by Chief Stocks?
May 4th, but.
Correction, May 4th, that's it.
Sorry, what did I say?
Second.
Second. Oh, yeah.
All right. So May 4th, we seconded it. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right. Great. And you're here for lacrosse jamboree applications, right? Okay. It was easy. It's already approved. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for joining us. Next up is the Sustainability Fair Street Closure Application. So this is a new event, and this is an application for Saturday, May 3, New Sustainability Fair, I think will also include members or students from Long Meadow High School. Any discussion, questions?
I'd love to know more about the Sustainability Fair. That's a different issue. Is this like a replacement for Long Meadow Days or a replacement?
I don't know anything about it.
Yeah.
No.
My understanding, it was the Climate Club in conjunction with the Energy and Sustainability Committee, looking to host some sort of informative event for residents.
Yeah. All right. All right. Well, I move to approve the street closure application for the Sustainability Fair to be held on Saturday, May 3, 2025, on the Long Meadow Town Green.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And then we've got a one day liquor license application.
How will we approve two one day, or two LA CCF liquor license applications for an event on January 30, 2025, and February 6, 2025, I'm sorry, 3, and February 27, 2025?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Next, we've got our Animal Control Officer Designation for 2025. This is just something we have to do to designate Marty Lee, who has been our Animal Control Officer and has been doing a great job. I move to designate Marty Lee, what's her last name?
Karamante.
Karamante as our 2025 Animal Control Officer.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Jump in the dragon.
All those in favor? All right. And then last, we've got our MMA Annual Business Meeting Voting Procedures. So hopefully you all had a chance to look at the four resolutions that will be voted on at the MMA Conference this weekend. Any discussion, questions on these? Basically, I, as the Select Board Chair, will have to go and vote, you know, for the town on these. And so I don't know if we want to, you know, vote on each resolution or just vote them, vote on all of them together. But there's, yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We appoint Benita Muffet, our chairman, to vote on behalf of the town of Long Meadow at the annual MMA Business Meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right. Great.
And then correspondence, any comments on correspondence?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So the, the cannabis home delivery service, that, that is done, right? Because they can't do that because we have a bylaw, can't have stores. They was asking for action. I just don't think that there's any action. The Select Board couldn't authorize, based on what my reading.
This is, this has been asked of us. So we've been working with town council on this. There is, just quickly, I can read you the response that we have. There's no written process for a municipal municipality to opt in. There's no guidance on this issue. Sorry, let me back up a little bit. Okay, this is specific to process for authorizing delivery. And this is where there isn't actually a written process for opting in by a municipality. There's no guidance on the issue. It could be done by forwarding a Select Board vote or town meeting, depending on municipal bylaws or charter. For Long Meadow, they believe it would need to be a warrant article or a ballot that says, shall the town allow for delivery of cannabis within its order? Then we would provide the Cannabis Control Commission with a certified copy of the vote. It's a long answer to say, it's status quo for what we have right now. There is a mechanism if we, there was a desire to allow delivery.
Oh, okay. I thought I read that the bar to retail establishments, that was the end of the story.
We believed that to be the case. It does not sound that it's as clean cut as that.
Okay. Right. Just curious. And somebody asked me about it.
Anything else?
All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.